Welcome, bienvenidos. Este mensaje será transmitido en español enseguida. I would like to provide you all with a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will dedicate 30 minutes to public comments. At the end of the meeting, there is a second and final opportunity for public comments. So if you do not get to speak during the first call, we encourage you to stay to the end. To request, if you'd like to speak, please begin to raise your hand now. To request to participate in public comment, you can do so by clicking on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and selecting the raise your hand. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you wait to raise your hand until the public comment has started, you may not get to speak during the first call. When called upon, you will be promoted to a panelist, which means that you will appear on camera. If you do not wish to appear on screen, please be sure to disable your camera on your end. The board president will usually call our students first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak tonight, please write S at the end of your name. The board president will determine to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. And on an individual basis, also have discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. When your time has elapsed, you will see Vice President Brown hold up a sign letting you know you have 15 seconds left. If you are still speaking, please finish your sentence, but try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you. Voy a proporcionar un breve resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión después de unos procedimientos preliminares. Un periodo de 30 minutos será dedicado a comentarios de parte del público. Al final de la junta habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes no pudieron participar durante la primera llamada. Les animamos que se queden para el final para poder hacerlo durante la segunda llamada. Para comentar por videoconferencia, haga clic en el botón participantes abajo de su pantalla y seleccione el botón levantar la mano o raise your hand. Al ser llamado, se le permitirá hablar uno, dos, o tres minutos dependiendo la dirección del presidente. Para hablar por teléfono, por favor levante la mano presionando estrella nueve. Usualmente el presidente llamará a los estudiantes primero, o si hay estudiantes que desean hablar esta noche, por favor de indicar que son estudiantes al escribir "estudiante" después de su nombre. Cuando haya transcurrido su tiempo, dice presidenta, Cadija Brown, levantará un signo indicando que le quedan 15 segundos. Si todavía está hablando, por favor de terminar su oración, pero trate de no sobrepasarse de su tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chires. And welcome everybody to the August 11th meeting of the Berkeley School Board. I'm gonna make a few very brief introductory comments and introduce a couple of new faces. But first, I'm gonna ask Ms. Chires to please call the roll. And for the record, we began closed session at 5:30 today and opened the open session at 7 o'clock. Go ahead, Ms. Chires.
Director, Student Director Anjuna Mascareña Swan. Director Ana Basudev.
Present.
Director Laura Babbitt.
Here.
Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Vice President Cadija Brown.
Present.
And President Alper.
Present. Thank you. All right, everyone. Well, welcome. I hope everyone had a safe and rejuvenating summer. I wanted to give, before we start with our agenda, I wanted to give just a brief introduction to tonight's meeting before we get started. And just to say a couple, couple words of welcome. I think that we're all feeling a mixture of emotions as we begin this particular school year. Certainly some frustration and pain given the persistence of the pandemic and the emergence of the Delta variant. And we will discuss tonight our continued efforts to ensure the health and safety of all of our students and employees. But I also think we're feeling great excitement because for the first time in so long, the vast majority of our students will be in school just a few days from now. And while things will still not be back to the way that they were before COVID, we can finally get back to the business of what we really are all here for, which is providing the very best and most equitable educational experiences we possibly can for all Berkeley children. And even though we need to discuss health and safety measures, and indeed they remain our top priority, we're also looking forward to the work of educating students focusing on their talents, their brilliance, their needs, their struggles, their accomplishments. And we had, you know, candidly, we had too little time to do that last year. And it's invigorating to be able to turn at least a great deal of our attention back to the education of our students. As for the health and safety issues that do remain at the forefront of many of our minds, we're going to be discussing tonight our staff's plan to mandate vaccines for all employees or else regular rapid testing, as well as surveillance testing for our students. What staff is proposing, and we'll hear a lot more about this, but what staff is proposing is very similar to what the governor has now mandated for the whole state. I want to say that thanks to our staff's hard work and the fact that the vast majority of our employees are already vaccinated, we will likely be able to ramp up this policy much sooner than the state is requiring, if that's the direction that the board provides tonight. We want to do everything humanly possible to keep kids in school this year. And that's the point of these aggressive health and safety measures that are going to be presented to us tonight. And I hope people stick around for that discussion, which will come right after our presentation from our staff, about all the ways in which we are ready to serve our students this year and excited about serving our students this year as soon as next week. I do want to introduce two new faces to the district that are here up on the virtual dais tonight. So that those of you who've taken the time to join us tonight know who they are because you haven't seen them before. First, we're thrilled to have a new student director from Berkeley High, Anjuna Mascareña Swan, who has big shoes to fill in filling Director Miller's shoes from last year. But Dr. Stevens and Ms. Chires and I had a great conversation with her a few days ago and are really excited about the experience and the perspective and the passion that she is going to bring to the board. So I hope everyone will join me in welcoming Director Mascareña Swan. And Director, if you would like to say a few words about joining the board, the floor is yours.
Hi, and like, yeah, like you said, my name's Anjuna. I'm the student director for this year and I issue her pronouns. And yeah, I'm just really excited to be representing you all, especially if there's any students on this call right now. Please know, like, please reach out to me anytime. I know the website hasn't been updated quite yet, but it should be up soon. And all my information will be on the school board website. So yeah, please feel free to reach out to me. I really just want to be the voice of all of you guys and represent you the best that I can.
Thank you so much and welcome. And then we have our new associate superintendent, Ruben Aurelio, who comes to us from West Hunter Costa. And we welcomed him back in June when he was appointed and he's been working all summer. So he's not brand new, but we're thrilled to have you here and wanted to give you the opportunity to say a few words.
And good evening, buenas noches, todos. I'm really excited. First official board meeting in Berkeley. I will say it's been five fast and furious weeks getting ready for the start of the school year, absorbing a lot of information and ensuring that our students are ready to go and our schools are ready to go on Monday. Just the excitement of this new year, so much of last year, even in my previous role in a different district, was so operationally based. I'm really excited to start talking about teaching and learning again and really focused on our students, really focused on where we can take them further. And just so be happy to see little pitter patter of feet in classrooms and on campus. So very excited. We will be ready come Monday for all the kids to come into our buildings. And it will be fantastic. So very excited. I hope to see many faces and meet people beyond the virtual screens soon enough.
Thank you so much. And since we have two other members of our staff who are here because they're going to be presenting soon. But just to introduce you so that people know who you are, Trish McDermott is our Public Information Officer, who has been working around the clock during all COVID to get our communications out. And Trish, if there's anything you would like to say by way of welcoming people to the new year, I wanted to give you that opportunity.
Just hi, everyone. I'm really happy to be here. I look forward to the meeting tonight.
Thank you. And Heidi Weber is our principal at Berkeley Independent Study and Berkeley Technology Academy. Ms. Weber, is there anything you'd like to say?
No, just grateful to be here tonight and thank you for having me. Looking forward to the start of everything.
Great. Well, thank you for being here. All right. Thank you all. I appreciate the indulgence. And the next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. And we're going to be pulling a couple items off the agenda because they're not ready yet. One of them is item, is an item on the consent counter. It's item 11.21, which is the approval of the 2122 Consolidated Application to Fund Categorical Aid Programs. We're pulling that off the agenda for tonight. And the public hearings that we had scheduled, items 14.1 and 14.2 are also not quite ready. We'll do that next meeting. So we're going to be pulling those from the agenda. The meeting is getting shorter. So are there any other changes to the agenda that anyone would like to make? Or if not, can I have a motion? That was literally a tie. I'll give it to Director Basudev.
Motion to approve, but the changes mentioned by President Alper.
Okay. Who even was the other person? Julie? Director Sinai? Okay, Director, I'll let you second it. Ms. Chires, can you call the roll?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Director Sinai.
Director Sinai, great. Student Director Mascareña Swan.
I'm not sure what to say.
Sorry, you say if you're voting to approve the agenda, you just say yes.
Noted. Director Basudev.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. And Director Mascareña Swan, congratulations on your first vote. You joined a unanimous board in approving the agenda. All right. So now we have our agenda. And I will now turn it over to Vice President Brown for a report from closed session.
Thank you. Thank you, President Alper. For item 3.1, the board heard an update and gave direction. For item 3.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, it was moved by President Alper, seconded by Director Babbitt, and the motion passed 5 to 0. Item 3.3.1 was removed from the agenda. And item 3.3.2, the board heard an update and provided direction, or the board heard an update, rather.
Thank you so much, Vice President Brown. You haven't missed a step over the summer. All right. That was the report from closed session. Okay, so now we are moving to public comment. And this is the time now to raise your Zoom hand if you'd like to give public comment. I'll give people a couple more seconds to raise their hand. Once we start public comment, if you raise your hand after we've started, you'll be able to speak, but not until the second public comment period at the end of the meeting. So if you want to speak now, raise your hand now. And everybody will have two minutes. So Vice President Brown, if you could set the timers for two minutes. Okay. And I know in the audience you can't see the participant list, but the last speaker for this period will be Hannah Margulies Kessel. But the first speaker will be Jonas Lamateri Brownell, followed by Sarah Ranny. So Mr. Lamateri Brownell, you have two minutes.
Oh, so sorry. I was clicking that I can speak and then unmuting.
It's okay. Can you hear me? Yeah, we got you.
Thank you. So good evening, Berkeley Unified School District community. My name is Jonas Lamateri Brownell, and I'm BUSD's Herick Hospital teacher. I teach multiple subjects to psychiatric hospitalized and partially hospitalized or day program students aged 12 to 18. Last year, whenever a Herick family requested my remote educational services for their adolescents, I was able to meet remotely one-on-one with them. This year, BUSD has apparently taken the position that for our Herick students, the decision whether to allow their families to opt for not in-person public education rests entirely with Sutter Hospital Administration. And I cannot inform families that I am ready to work with their child remotely if they so choose. At this time, Sutter management of the adolescent PHB of the day programs has indicated to me that families will not be able to obtain any not in-person BUSD education this year, but can either come into the Herick classroom with me or not have any educational support at all. So last year, families of the day program students told me how happy they were that they did not have to try to keep their child at the hospital longer than their clinical treatment programs every day and could flexibly arrange with me when we would have remote instruction meetings. I believe it is unfair and perhaps a violation of ADA for these families to be denied what other BUSD families have available to them, a remote-only option. I asked BUSD to inform Herick Hospital Administration that we do need to offer a remote-only option to our BUSD Herick students. Could their families want this? That's my appeal to you. I'm not sure where else to put the appeal, but that's how it stands right now. And I ask you to very carefully consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we have Sarah Ranny, followed by Martha Kane.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Ranny.
Excellent. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Sarah Ranny. I'm a parent of two kids at Malcolm X, and I wanted to take a minute to draw your attention to climate change literacy. I've been working with Berkeley High student junior Ella Surin, retired teacher Martha Kane, board member Babbitt, and an ad hoc group of concerned teachers, parents, and community members, and several student groups who all see the need for BUSD to accelerate its work around the issues of climate change and resiliency. We have drafted a resolution about climate literacy to ensure all BUSD students graduate with an understanding of climate change, climate justice, and community resilience. On board President Alper and Superintendent Stevens' recommendation, we are already in touch with Sustainability Coordinator Sophia Pels and to make sure everyone in the district is working toward the same goals. As we kick off this year with purpose and hope, and in a week where we've just heard from the IPCC how urgent our work on climate change really must be, I wanted to let you all know that we're continuing our efforts here to find allies and build support for this resolution. We hope to meet with each of you during your September office hours. We'll also be reaching out again to BUSD leadership and the BFT over the next month. And we'll be back to the board meeting this fall to seek your formal support in the form of a yes vote on our resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ranny. Thanks for all your work. We appreciate you being here. All right. Linda Clark, followed by Caitlin Rosenthal.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, technical glitch there. I would like to talk about a couple of things. I was very glad to hear the vaccine mandate today. And I'm glad to hear it's going to be implemented as soon as possible. I'm also asking that students be vaccinated as soon as possible, all students, and mandated because we mandate vaccinations for other diseases before they come to school. And I think that we should also be mandating vaccination against COVID. And I'm going to be working in sixth grade this year, which means my students are not vaccinated because of their age. So I have, you know, a lot of concerns about that. So one thing I would like to make sure that the district is providing is adequate masks for everybody. I understand, and may not be correct, that you're offering clinical masks. It's been documented that they do not provide enough protection against the Delta variant, and people are recommending KN95 for those. So I'd like to, the district, purchase those to make sure that everybody can have access to them. And my other concern is about the distance learning program for the independent study program for students that are in special education. I was at the town hall meeting the other night, and I didn't hear that there's a special education teacher being hired to work in that program, which I would urge because students with IPs actually need the expertise of a special education teacher to help them with their work. And I'm also very concerned about the fact that an IP that's already in place, where the services have been laid out by people that know the students and are familiar with needs of students with disabilities, that's going to be changed. I understand some changes would be needed because of the format. But I'm concerned that it's too much change. I don't know what it would be, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We have Caitlin Rosenthal, followed by Yvette Falarka. And just a reminder that Vice President Brown's background is the timer that tells you how much time you have. We appreciate.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Rosenthal.
I'm the mother of a first grader who can't yet get vaccinated. And I just want to add to the voices urging a vaccine mandate for staff and teachers. I was encouraged by Governor Newsom's announcement today, but it still seems an awfully long time away with school about to start. And I really encourage that there might be the possibility of BUSD taking action earlier. We know that people who are vaccinated are less likely to get the virus and that they're less likely to transmit it. It's only one part of the plan you guys have put together, which I think is a great one, but I think it's a cornerstone of that plan. And I'm really uncomfortable with putting my son on a bus or in a classroom with unvaccinated adults. I think this will help us keep kids safe, and it's also going to help us keep kids in school after a really, really difficult year of inconsistency last year by limiting quarantines. I would also just add that it's frustrating at this moment not to have the data on the vaccination rates, even in the aggregate for the school district or for the individual schools. So it's hard to feel confident going into next week. But I'm excited that you guys have this on your agenda and look forward to hearing more.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next, we have Yvette Falarka, followed by Martine de Mucha Flores. And then our last speaker will be Hannah Margulies Kessel. Go ahead, Ms. Falarka. Ms. Falarka, I think you muted yourself.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Thank you. Technical problems too. Yvette Falarka, I teach at Martin Luther King Middle School, and I'm also representing the Yon Bham Caucus. I fully support a vaccine mandate for teachers and all staff and adults, but we also need a vaccine mandate for all students who are eligible to get COVID vaccines. As students return to school face-to-face, children will be infected with COVID. They're going to become sick with COVID. They're going to spread COVID to their families. Some children will be hospitalized with COVID, and some have already died from COVID. Children are the chief means of the disease's spread among themselves and their families. I just learned like two minutes ago that a dear friend of mine, his 11-year-old niece was symptomatic and recently tested positive for COVID. And now the whole family, including her grandmother, is on pins and needles trying to control this crisis. This is going to be replicated in every school and in every school district, returning children back to school in face-to-face. Alameda County is on the CDC's list of national COVID hotspots. And Channel 7 News identified Berkeley as a Bay Area community with identified low vaccination rates in certain areas. The highly infectious Delta variant of COVID in the space of three weeks has turned California back to the worst conditions from even at higher rates of COVID infection and transmission than even a year ago. Long COVID is also a tragedy that affects children as well as adults. Mandatory vaccinations of schoolteachers and staff is just the first step of what's needed. Berkeley should do what Marin County is doing and mandate COVID vaccinations and testing for all eligible children and staff. And every parent who chooses online education for their child should be able to get that child into the program as soon as they sign up. And every one of them should be able to have a space saved for them in their child's home school. Not to do so simply punishes parents who are taking steps to protect their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Falarka. Okay, next we have Martine de Mucha Flores. Okay, well, next is Martine de Mucha. Oh, Hannah, there's Hannah. Okay. Wait. Well, Hannah, you're here. So why?
Hi.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and then?
Oh, there's Martine. I don't want to cut in line.
Okay, Martine. Martine will go, and then Hannah will be our final speaker. Go ahead, Martine.
All right. Buenas tardes. Good evening. It's good to be here with you all back again. I come to you as a parent, as a community advocate. I come in my role as an administrator at the Community College and just in support of students. Four things I want to highlight, or five, actually. One is I think it's important to stay our commitment to equity and racial justice by opening each year by acknowledging that the land acknowledgement of this land and who it belonged to, et cetera. I also want to acknowledge that we need to continue to focus on Latino, Latina, Latinx student success. I saw the contract for Fisher, with Fisher. I applaud that. We also need to get something started for Latino, Latinx, Latinx in the community. I also want to acknowledge the Yale contract for the master plan. I'm glad that's moving forward, and I encourage you to keep on that progress. The other thing I want to highlight is we know that there's been a lot of loss and gaps in terms of math and literacy gains for our students of color, and we really need to focus on that. What do interventions look like that for students? The other part that I want to acknowledge as well is thinking about the CCAP agreement, which is an agreement between BUSD and possibly Berkeley and Protagonist Community College District Program. What does expanded dual enrollment options look like for students? You have to keep in mind, Black and Brown students have not done well with the AP process. Dual enrollment allows for those types of students to get early access to the college credit, allowing them to excel into college and transfer on to bachelor's degrees. Thank you all for the time. Good to be in community. See you all through the year.
Thanks so much. Appreciate you being here. Hannah Margulies Kessel, we'll go to you now for the last public comment before we go on to our union comment.
Can you remind me who to watch for the time?
Vice President Brown.
Thank you, Vice President Brown. My name, good evening and welcome back. Excited for the new school year. My name is Hannah Margulies Kessel, and I have been a kindergarten teacher at Washington and a BFT member for over a decade. I'm deeply concerned that BUSD is following the bare minimum safety measures that have been put forth by local and state health officials for the upcoming school year. Requirements such as social distancing and quarantining have been drastically reduced or eliminated since the spring, despite the fact that children are now more vulnerable to COVID than ever. Specifically, it's imperative that students, teachers, staff quarantine when exposed to a positive case, even if wearing masks when exposed, even if vaccinated, and even if asymptomatic. Masks do not offer 100% protection even for adults, and young children have more room for error in masking capabilities. In addition, health officials are now acknowledging cloth masks are not enough against the Delta, recommending KN or N95s even in the school setting. We cannot pretend that masks are enough protection and skip thorough quarantining practices. Similarly, vaccinated people can still get COVID, be asymptomatic, spread it, and therefore should quarantine if exposed as well. I urge Dr. Stevens and the board to move forward in a way that reflects a commitment to the safety of our students by implementing more robust distancing and quarantining measures. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. And anybody else who would like to speak, there will be another public comment period at the end of our meeting. Next, we have union comments. And if you're here for a union comment, if you could raise your hand and maybe make a note. I don't see any representative from unions, except we have a video from BF, from our Teachers Union President Matt Meyer from the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. So Ms. Chires, do you want to queue that up for us? There you go.
Hello, Dr. Stevens and the Berkeley Unified School Board. It is great to see you all again and welcome our students and staff back to campus. I know our teachers are very excited to meet their new students and are committed to making sure each student excels. The pandemic has impacted our community in many ways, and our schools are one place where we can make sure that all students have access to the social, emotional resources necessary to succeed. Increased state and federal financial support will allow us to increase services to students and build stronger school sites that meet the diverse needs of our students. These past couple of weeks, BFT has been working with the district to ensure our students can return to our school. These past couple of weeks, BFT has been working with the district to ensure our students can return to our school sites in ways that will keep our community safe. We know that the most disruptive element to school this year will be positive COVID cases. In order to reduce these disruptions, we collectively need to make sure that our staff and students are following health guidelines. And that our district is able to react quickly as possible to positive COVID cases. Our agreements around masking, testing and vaccinations are necessary protocols to decrease positive COVID cases. It will be important for students and staff, even if vaccinated, to participate in surveillance testing at all of our sites. The Delta variant has changed some of the assumptions that we have had about how COVID spreads, so frequent testing will be necessary to catch COVID early before it spreads. Additionally, BFT requested that the district put in mandatory vaccinations or mandatory frequent testing of unvaccinated adults before there was a state mandate. We know that vaccinations are a key line of defense against the virus. We are thankful for the high vaccination numbers in our community as a whole and especially our youth. We do believe Berkeley is a model for how a community can protect itself from surging COVID outbreaks. This year may not be normal as the pandemic is not over, but we have each other in the classroom communities we've built to support our students' learning. We are dependent on these relationships to not just improve our students' academic performance, but also support their social emotional health. We look forward to the first day of school and a great year ahead. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Meyer, who's again the president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I don't see any other unions. Is there, are there any um committees, committee comments now? Any representatives of any of our district committees? I know this is the first meeting of the year, so our committees probably haven't been meeting all summer. All right, not seeing any. We will move right along to board member and superintendent comments. This is the opportunity for board members to say a few brief words before we get into our um the meat of our agenda. So is there anybody who would? Like to go first?
Yes, I will go first. Um, welcome back, everyone. It's definitely one of my favorite commercials that are running right now and the Welcome Back song is playing and all the kids are happy. Because they're on their way to school. So we are definitely excited and ready to welcome you all. For this new adventure of learning. Want to welcome Director Anjuna. I look forward to working with you. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve your community and our shared. Goals in BUSD. And then definitely want to welcome Assistant Superintendent Ruben Aurelio. Thank you so much for choosing to join BUSD. I know that both of you will be. Very important additions to our governance team. I want to thank those who came out to support the climate literacy and justice work and. Working on that formal approval of the resolution and implementing that so that we can leave this world a better place. It's truly been a pleasure working, learning and uh diving into this work. And so I'm looking forward to that uh passing in the future. Also want to announce that OFI is on it again. They are having the CADA College School Supply Giveaway. At this Saturday at San Pablo Park from ten to two PM. At the Francis Albright Community Center, a council member Terry Taplin will be joining us. The Berkeley Times will be there. And I will also hold office hours there from ten thirty to noon. So come on out, get your school supplies. If you need a Chromebook, Berkeley Public Schools Fund is on it again. They will be passing out two hundred Chromebooks. Um and so let's get ready to uh ready to learn and launch a successful twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Babett. Um, who'd like to go next? Director Sineh?
Sure. Um, welcome back, everybody. It's exciting to be here. Um I I also too would like to offer a special welcome to our new student. Director Anjuna. Uh so is it Mascarain Mascarainas Swan?
Mascanius.
Mascanius Swan and uh welcome. We look forward to meeting you in person and I'm having another year of. Dynamic student voice on the board. Um and all of our student directors have been just super dynamic and um and. We have every expectation that we'll be able to do some great stuff together. Um also, welcome Associate Superintendent Aurelio. I know you hit the ground running, so I appreciate all the work that you've been doing. You know, it's a new start with new opportunities and you know, as as people have said, we're still under the cloud of COVID nineteen. Uh which is likely to persist throughout the winter. Um our best defense and protection. For our community members who are not eligible for the vaccine is for the rest of us to get vaccinated. And while the Delta variant is climbing, to wear our masks. Um I really want to thank our teachers, our staff and our administrators for their summer preparation. To ensure that the opening of school is safe for everyone, that we're dialed into our public health directives and we're prepared, we're prepared to respond and adapt. For preparing the school facilities so that they're ready for our students and staff. For a focus on teaching and learning by creating lesson plans over the summer and curriculum. To ensure all of our students, particularly of those who are struggling, will succeed this year and for taking care of themselves. Giving the range of traumatic experiences over the past eighteen months, I really hope that our staff. And our teachers and our administrators were able to take time um and really take care of themselves and their community. I also want to welcome all the families back to school. I recognize that there's a simultaneous feeling of enthusiasm and trepidation. Uh that you may experience as you walk through the doors of your child's school. And you know, we join another semester or for those of you who are joining another semester of virtual academy or independent study. As we kick off the new school year, I just want to take a moment to really share with you my commitment with my top four priorities for this school year. First and foremost, I will stay focused on keeping our students and our staff safe and in school. That I'm committed to looking, uh working on the social, emotional and mental health supports for our staff. And our students in ways that engage our parents and our guardians. So I'll be asking a lot of questions about that. I'm very committed to targeted academic support. That is inclusive of targeted tutoring with acceleration strategies, not just remediation. Particularly around math and language arts and using the resources that we allocated in June in the budget. For the purposes of really supporting our students getting past the barriers that they faced last year. And that our local control accountability plan is a live roadmap and that we have heightened attention. To racial equity in our educational outcomes and experiences. And that we have a hyper focus on our African American, Latinx, English learners and special needs students. I think we have a huge lift ahead of us. But everybody um is working uh well and passionate about uh really meeting the needs of our students, our families. And I look forward to the partnerships moving forward. I plan to have my open office hours starting the second Sunday of the month. From one thirty to three at Cafe Leila with the first uh one being September twelfth. So I'll work with Ms. Chataz about getting that up on the website and look forward to to getting engaged with folks. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Sineh. Who'd like to go next? Director Rastadov.
Sure. Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming to our first school board meeting. I hope that all of our families had a wonderful summer and I'd also like to join my colleagues in welcoming our new student director, Anjuna Mascareño Swan. I look forward to serving with you and as Director Sineh said. All of our student directors have been wonderful and you really reflect the very best of our district. So welcome and thank you. I also want to welcome our Associate Superintendent, Mr. Ruben Aurelio. I'm really excited that you're here and you've already hit the ground running. I was very pleased last night to, you know, co-host with you the Spanish Language Town Hall around. Returning to school and thank you for just, you know, stepping in and hitting the ground running in preparation for this school year. We're really excited to have you and. I know that my colleagues and I are really looking forward to working with you. I want to appreciate everyone who came out tonight to the board meeting. And I know that there's a lot of questions still, you know, pending about the health and safety of our students. As President Alper mentioned, um that's the, that's really what's top of mind right now. As well as the, you know, excitement of next week, right? I feel that. I see it in my children. I see it in lots of families preparing. To come back, whether coming back to, you know, in-person learning or not, but that excitement that our kids are feeling to learn, I I feel it too and. And I can't wait to visit our campuses next week. At the same time, I'm also really concerned about the surge in COVID nineteen due to the Delta variant. It feels like once you're over the hump, something else happens. That said, I want to reassure our families that our district has been hard at work to to keep our students and educators safe when they return. I also want to thank our labor partners. I I was really impressed by the speech by our BFT leader. I know that our that our labor partners have been proactive about advocating for vaccine requirements. Ahead of the state mandate. So I want to reassure the public that, you know, our unions have also been thinking about health and safety over the summer very carefully. And I'll say that this summer was not a quiet summer. Um there were a lot of people behind the scenes working hard. There were board members reviewing the CDPH guidelines when they came out in July. Uh there were, there was lots of research on the staff side around student testing and a lot of work went into preparing our classrooms for the fall. As you know, many public health officials discuss multiple layers of interventions that are needed to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. These all include masking, access to testing, vaccine accessibility, now the state mandate. All of these things together play an important role in keeping our schools safe. I'm really looking forward to our discussion tonight and encourage any families who still have pending questions, who may not have made it to the town halls this week. To please write to us. We want to hear what those questions are and we want to make sure that you get the answers that you need. You know, to feel confident in returning to schools next week. So our Spanish-speaking families. Bienvenidos a todos nuestros estudiantes. Ayer pude asistir a la reunión informativa sobre el regreso a la escuela este otoño. Entiendo que debido a la variante Delta muchas familias aún tienen preguntas sobre la seguridad de nuestras escuelas. Si usted tiene alguna pregunta pendiente o si no pudo ir a la junta anoche, por favor escríbanos porque nosotros queremos hacer todos los posibles para ir, para ayudarlos a entender cómo estamos así, cómo estamos trabajando. Para que nuestras escuelas y nuestros estudiantes se sientan más seguros. I also want to echo what Director Sineh said, that we're going to be, you know, laser focused and ready to roll up our sleeves and work. To implement the commitments that we made in our budget discussion in June to make sure that we have targeted interventions for our students that need to need these the most. To address mental health and the mental health needs of our students as they come back to the classrooms. A lot of the discussions, right? We know we're going to be working hard. To overcome the long-term impacts of this pandemic. So I'm ready to roll up my sleeves. I will put up my office hours too online shortly and I can't wait. To meet with families. Please write to me. I look forward to to engaging, to making sure that you have all the information that you need uh to feel successful at the beginning of the year and throughout this year. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Director Rastadov. Uh student director, Mascanius Swan, are you ready to go or would you like Vice President Brown to go first?
I can go.
Okay, great.
Um, well, I've already introduced myself a little bit, but again, hi, my name's Anjuna Mascanius Swan. And I'm really excited to be your student director this year. It's been really nice hearing from um people who spoke already today. And just to give a little background on who I am, um I'm a student. I'm a senior at Berkeley High. I've been working and learning in the BUSD community for a very long time. And I'm just really excited to have this opportunity to give back and be involved um in this community even more. And I'm really passionate about working on um comprehensive consent education for students of all ages. Um working on reducing police presences on campus and prioritizing the safety of students, especially students of color. Um and then obviously just working on representing student voices during this really big transitional period as we return back to school. Um, yeah, so please reach out to me. I have, I mean, my email will be up on the um website shortly and I also have an Instagram page. Um, so please, there's a lot of resources on there. I have a reminder and a Google form. So whichever way works best, I really just want to be as accessible as possible to everyone. Um and just as a little warning, um I'm recovering from jet lag. So if you see me yawning at all during the meeting, that's why. It's nothing about anything else. Um and yeah, I'm really excited to be working with you all this year. Um, thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice President Brown only uses TikTok, so if you could get that going, that would be great too. Um. Uh Vice President Brown, that's your cue.
Thank you, President Alper. Good evening, everyone, and a heartfelt welcome back. I am so excited. To be back this school year and I know all of you all are as well. It's so great to see all of these beautiful smiling faces. In their Brady Bunch squares on the Zoom uh session and to see all of you all at home. I can't physically see you. Um but I know that you were there. So thank you for joining us and and thank you for coming back. Um, I would like to, as my board colleagues did, welcome our new student board director, Anjuna, to the board. We are excited and happy to have you here. Um President Alper mentioned that you have some pretty big shoes to fill, but I know a strong, passionate, wonderful girls fill our own shoes. So. Welcome to the board and we're excited about all the gifts that you will bring um and all the things that we'll be able to share with you as well. Um I'd like to officially welcome Associate Superintendent Aurelio. Um although he's uh been here for five, what he called fast and furious weeks in, well, hopefully you didn't say furious, hopefully you said wonderful weeks here in uh BUSD. But this is your first school board meeting, so welcome. We are also excited to have you here. We know that you come to BUSD with so much experience. And also a vision. So we're, we're happy that you are here. Welcome. We're excited about partnering with you. Um in this work to ensure that our students have the best educational opportunities possible. Um I'd like to give a special appreciation um to our staff, uh some represented here on the screen with us. But lots at home who worked tirelessly through the summer to ensure that um our return to schools are both safe. And um smooth for our students, our families and also for our staff. And additionally, I'd like to to also thank our students, families and staff who have been preparing um at home for our return to school. Thank you for the safety protocols that you have been practicing and perfecting. Um in order to keep all of our uh community members safe as we return. Um I'm excited, fired up to be here and I know that our school year um is going to be phenomenal. So once again, thank you all for joining us this evening and let's have an amazing year.
Thank you so much, Vice President Brown. Um we skipped over the Berkeley PTA Council. So before I go to Dr. Stevens for his comments, I'm gonna. Um ask Vicky Davis to um give comments on behalf of the Berkeley PTA Council and and Ms. Davis, you have five minutes.
Hello, thank you. Um this is Vicky Davis and I'm going to be reading a statement on the, for the Berkeley PTA Council. And the council has been going through a goal-setting process over the summer and um then a number of areas of focus for us are emerging. And we wanted to bring those up to let the district and um uh the board know about the different priorities that we're going to be focusing on this year. Um so the first um thing that came up is after-school programming, mathematics, achievement, the sharing of PTA funds and equity and diversity and inclusion. In regards to after-school programming, we all know that this can be a critical component in our children's academic and social emotional development. With four or five hours per day, this time rivals the number of classroom minutes provided as formal instruction. Unfortunately, from an equity lens, there seems to be significant variability in the quality and access of after-school programming across various school sites. And according to the Extended Learning Program Task Force that convened a few years ago, the council has voted. That it has an interest in supporting this effort to find ways to provide universal access to high-quality programming to support working families. And to help our students achieve their goals, especially after a year of social isolation and distance learning. The importance of this program has only been underscored this summer as caregivers are scrambling to make arrangements for this fall. Indeed, being able to plan earlier is one of the recommendations that this task force has previously made. Currently, we are not aware that any of the task force recommendations from two thousand eighteen has been considered. The council would like, at the very least, the Extended Learning Tac Task Force restored and reporting back to the BUSD community regularly. This year, we would also like to bring math, attention to mathematics achievement for all students. We invite the board's partnership in determining ways that the council and local PTAs can support universal success in meeting mathematic achievement goals. Supporting the city of Berkeley's twenty twenty vision and the district's current LCAP plans. Thirdly, as you well know, public education has evolved to require significant private school-based fundraising. Well-funded PTAs wield considerable financial power, determining the type of enrichment programs a school can afford. financial power, determining the type of enrichment programs a school can afford to offer. This can give different schools, even those geographically close to one another, vastly different resources. The council is interested in exploring ways in which the PTAs might be able to share funding, thereby reducing resourcing disparities across school sites. This has been discussed in the past, and we feel that through examination of potential risks and benefits, benchmarking, and the development of opinions on how we could practically share funds would be useful. Thus informed, we can decide collectively if we should implement this system or not. Finally, we believe we must take an equity rubric or lens to all of the work that the council supports. This would mean, for example, that in examining student outcomes or the efficiency of programs, that we disaggregate outcomes data by race, ethnicity, and gender. This should be core and foundational to the work of educating our children. Let me just finish by saying thank you to the board for the consideration of our remarks, and we look forward to working with you in the upcoming year.
Thanks so much, Ms. Davis. We appreciate you being here on behalf of the Berkeley PTA Council. Now I will turn it over to Dr. Stevens for his comments.
Thanks very much, President Alper, and welcome to everybody. It's really nice to see this crowd here again, and it's great to be back with colleagues on the Board of Education as well as new colleagues in the central office. Like my colleagues on the governance team, I'd like to first welcome Student Director Mascherena Swan. Welcome to you. It was great to be able to meet with you earlier this week, and I look forward to supporting your leadership in your role this year. I also want to welcome Ruben Aurelio to our team, new Associate Superintendent. He is in charge of Ed Services, Education Services here in Berkeley. Has been with us for five weeks and has jumped right in. Thank you to you very much for all your contributions already. And then I'd love to introduce to the Berkeley community, although they're not here this evening, several other district office administrators who have joined the team over the summer. First to Lisa Estupen, who is our new Director of State, Federal, and Special Projects. To Ruth Steele-Brown, the new Director of our Berkeley Research Evaluation and Assessment Department. And to Kathy Fleming, who is the Director of Local Resources, and she will be taking the place of our much-deceived Natasha Beery, who has been leading our work to manage BSEP and BARA, the two community parcel taxes that fund so many important parts of the district. I also want to recognize just how extensive the teamwork has been to get to this point, that we're reopening our schools in only a few short days. To all of our teachers and staff, our school principals and assistant principals, district office leaders and education services who have been working on training and to develop new support partnerships, both for staff and for students. To our Human Resources Department, including Samantha Tobias-Espanosa, who's not able to be here this evening, and our labor partners who have been working both on staffing as well as agreements on health and safety and many other important topics. Business Services, led by Ms. Pauline Follinsby, has been instrumental over the summer, as well as Transportation and Nutrition Services Department. To the Board of Education, who continue to step in and provide guidance and wisdom, our city partners. And then to every member of our extended community, our families, parents, guardians, who have taken time to write to us with suggestions and concerns. You're also part of this extended lattice of support for all of our students, and we do really welcome and encourage you to stay involved with us as we have so many important topics to discuss. And then finally, to all of the district office staff who labored through the summer in ways sometimes that are invisible to members of the public, but nonetheless make the district run. One of the most happy moments over the summer for me was resuming my little tradition of Friday cookie runs, running down to the local bakery, grabbing some chocolate chip cookies, and then tearing around the office to make sure that everybody has some sweets on a Friday afternoon. I just can't say how much it means to begin to see people together again in person and feel the energy as we come into this new school year. I thought that I would offer a couple of remarks just about the moment of the summer that came for most of us in which we had an opportunity, sometimes the first opportunity, to reflect on the pandemic since it started almost 18 months ago. As leaders, and that includes board members, administrators, school administrators, we've had so much time over the last 18 months that we've needed to invest energy into dealing with the impact of this pandemic. While we, as individuals, were experiencing loss or isolation, a sense of optimism earlier in the summer, followed by this newly, sort of, this new sense of caution that we're all feeling. We all collectively have been dealing with ongoing rapid changes, which continues to be true even this week, and as well have been asked to absorb the concern, the anger, the frustration of so many members of our community. And I do know, speaking as the superintendent of the district, that this has added up for all of our leaders. Like many other people, I had the opportunity to reflect on this and think about what's important as we come into the new school year. We tried to set this tone with our school leaders when we welcomed them back for our management retreat only a couple of weeks ago. We focused our time on what it means to have experienced a trauma, what trauma is for folks, and how it can differ across a variety of lived experiences. We talked as well as a team about the trajectory of understanding and recovering from trauma and how that trajectory can sometimes go backward and forwards, look very different for different students, staff members, and families. Together as leaders, we continue to ask of ourselves that we are sort of called to help one another. And we still are going to call upon our community to remember that this is a moment in which the right question to ask is, how can I help? What can I do to build our community together to weather this pandemic? For me personally, it was a moment of reflection over the summer, and I come into this school year with a renewed commitment to collaboration and teamwork, with a renewed commitment to sharpening our collective focus and focus on the inequities of the school district, those that existed prior to the pandemic and those that have been exacerbated by it. And as well, a commitment again to continue forward important work and priority areas while also managing the pandemic in a way that feels humane and compassionate. And then finally, as I've spent time with colleagues in person, I'm recalling the importance of joy in our public school system as we welcome back our young people. With all of these various experiences, what I most hope for is that they see in our adults a sense of joy, of renewed commitment, and that that happiness to be with them, to share learning, and to experience the joy of their own learning is clear in everything that we do as a school district. If there's any single thing that we must all be called upon to bring into our work with our young people, it's this sense of joy. I very much appreciate the public's ongoing attendance with us. Thank you so much for being here this evening. We have a very interesting agenda this evening, and we'll begin in just a few moments that will include a discussion about vaccination requirements for staff and independent study program, which has been modified significantly by the state of California over the summer, as well as a comprehensive review this evening of health and safety practices on our campus. So welcome back to everybody. It was really great to be here, and I thank everybody for the opportunity to share a little bit about our experience of the summer. So President Alper, back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Stevens. Now we will move to our consent calendars. Our motion to approve the consent calendar, please.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Director Babett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Brown, Ms. Tyrance.
Student Director Mascherena Swan. Yes. Director Vasilev. Yes. Director Babett.
Yes.
Director Saini.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. Thank you. And now we will move right into our first discussion item. So I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Stevens, and I think also to Assistant Superintendent Aurelio for an update on the start of the year.
Thank you very much, President Alper. I'm really glad to be joined by two of my colleagues this evening. That's Associate Superintendent Ruben Aurelio, who's been introduced several times this evening. He's new to our team, very glad to have him this evening. And then Trish McDermott, our Public Information, is also joining us this evening for a recap of changes to health and safety protocols enacted by the state over the course of the summer. So this evening, we'll talk a little bit about the many ways that BUSD is ready to welcome students and staff back on Monday, August 16th, only a few short days from now. Ms. McDermott will review current public health guidelines for our schools, and then Associate Superintendent Aurelio will talk, and I will talk a little bit about support for students and families. So first, you heard Associate Superintendent Aurelio talk about BUSD being ready, and there are so many ways in which our team has been in preparation to ensure that the full academic experience that is Berkeley Unified is ready for Monday, August 16th. Not only are we ready to welcome students back to a full-time, five-day-per-week schedule, something we've been talking about for many months, but we're also very excited to be restoring our academic and enrichment programming, our music, our arts, sports programs, as well as the rich array of assessments that we offer early in the school year to understand the needs and the strengths of students who will be returning from a variety of circumstances. We're also very proud that over the course of the summer, that staffing in our schools as well as leadership in our schools has remained consistent. Compared to many local districts, we are very well-staffed and working only on finishing touches in a few of our programs. And this is quite unique for Berkeley compared to many East Bay districts that continue to struggle in a very tight labor market to attract staff into their districts. As well, we've been working hard to make sure that all of our in-person learning is prepared. This includes facilities, curriculum, and training, as well as developing a remote learning through our expanded independent study program. After-school staffing is continuing this week, and we are on our way to be able to, being able to offer a fully-staffed after-school program. And as well, our transportation program will be returning to a full schedule of bus routes, including afternoon routes to after-school providers. Our Nutrition Services team has been hard at work, and we're very happy to be able to share that this year, for the first time ever, all meals for all students, this includes breakfasts and lunch, will be free to every student on campus. We will be collecting application forms. We hope you will fill those out because those are key for our funding with the state. But nonetheless, meal service is free this year, and that's a very exciting development for all of us. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Trish McDermott, our Public Information Officer, and she's going to take us through a series of slides that offer the community and all of us an update about health guidance enacted by the state of California over the summer. So over to you, Ms. McDermott.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. So on July 12th, the California Department of Public Health issued guidance for K-12 school. This is safety guidance relative to COVID-19. And you see in the preamble to the guidance, they included this sentence, that the foundational principle of this guidance is that all students must have access to safe and full in-person instruction and to as much instructional time as possible. And in the following slide, you'll see how thematically we are taking that guidance and then developing guidance for all of our school sites. And just as a reminder, the district continues to meet on a regular basis with our partners in public health. So that includes the city of Berkeley, that includes weekly meetings with the Alameda County Office of Education in conjunction with the Alameda County Public Health Department, and then also with some of our regional health partners. Next slide. On Friday, we published our COVID-19 safety plan for 202021, and just today, we also published that plan in Spanish. This is a comprehensive plan. It's about 28 pages long, and it details all of our risk mitigation strategies. It also has a lot of links to guidance and other information that families can use and staff as well as their planning for the school year. And then I just also want to call your attention to the campus reopening information page, and you can find this page at the link below. Or if you just go to our website, there's a prominent link to it on the homepage of our website. And this is a really comprehensive page in English and Spanish that includes links to many documents, to guidance that we're using, to health screening information. It has recordings of the town halls that we had this week. It has information about vaccinations. It will soon include link to testing information, including testing schedules. So this is a great page to visit and to continue visiting, and we update it regularly. So the CDPH guidance focused on several key strategies to help mitigate the risk of COVID-19 in schools this year. Masking is one of those key strategies, and all of the masking guidance is regardless of vaccination status. So in BUSD schools, everyone will mask inside, so that students, that staff, and to a limited extent, if we have visitors, they would mask as well. There is exceptions if you're underage, too, and there are some medical exemptions if you're unable to wear a mask. We also will be masking outdoors. Now, this is more conservative than the CDPH guidance, but masking outdoors will allow us to keep more students in school in what will learn to be is a something called a modified quarantine if they are exposed to a COVID-19 case. We're masking on buses and that staff and students, and then we're still awaiting guidance around athletics and music from CDPH, and as we get updated guidance, we will update the community. And then just as a reminder, masks can come off when you're eating and drinking. And when that happens, we will social distance to the extent possible and will maximize that distancing. Vaccinations are also another key risk mitigation strategy. This graph on the left was provided to us by the city of Berkeley recently, and this reflects Berkeley youth. So these are residents of Berkeley, and it reflects their vaccination status. And as a reminder, we do have students in our schools who are not residents of Berkeley. But you can see that these numbers are quite high. It shows us both first doses, so most residents of Berkeley, who are youth, have had a first dose, and then at the 12 to 15-year level or age range, 80% are fully vaccinated, and for older students, it's 91%. And largely, this is due to the partnership that we've had with the city of Berkeley to offer vaccination opportunities really from the very beginning. So in early 2021, when we first rolled out those opportunities for our staff, and then in the spring, when vaccines became available to our youth, we hosted clinics at Berkeley High School and also at Longfellow Middle School so that we could really begin to make vaccines accessible to all of our students and our school community. And we're continuing to do that, so we have a clinic this Friday at Longfellow. We also have had clinics all week at City Hall, so students who are coming to Berkeley High School for registration or to pick up materials could also then go and get vaccinated. And you'll see here, the city of Berkeley is also listing at the Ann Chandler Clinic, there are vaccinations all this month. And you can always go to the city of Berkeley website, and they list all the vaccination opportunities. And I just also want to call out that in the event that you had or your student had their first vaccine, but missed their second vaccination appointment, even if that was two weeks ago or four weeks ago or longer, you can still get that second vaccine by showing up at one of these clinics and bringing that white card that you got when you got your first vaccine. COVID testing is another important risk mitigation strategy. You may remember that we had testing both for students and our staff last year in the spring, and this year we will bring that back. And we'll actually be offering two kinds of testing. So surveillance testing is when you test a large group of people. They're not symptomatic. They might not expect that they have COVID, but in fact, you may find people in that community who are positive for COVID because they're asymptomatic. And remember, you can still spread COVID if you're asymptomatic. So surveillance testing is really important to make sure that we're finding people who don't have symptoms for COVID, but actually could be spreading it in our school. The second kind of testing we'll be offering is a modified quarantine testing, and in a subsequent slide, we'll talk a little bit more about what the modified quarantine is, but this is an opportunity to keep more students in school after they've been exposed to COVID-19. It has a variety of criteria to make a student eligible, and one is testing on a weekly basis during what would normally have been the at-home quarantine period. So we'll continue to communicate about testing. As I mentioned, there will be a link to testing information, including testing schedules on that campus reopening page. And just as a reminder, insurance will not be required for testing. There's not a cost for testing. The test is a gentle nasal swab. It's not the swab that some of us remember from the early days of COVID that went quite far up our noses. This really goes in just about an inch, and it is administered by trained staff. There are some significant changes to how we respond to cases. You may remember that we have COVID liaisons at every school and also at the district level. That includes our district nurses who've been trained by the city of Berkeley to do case response, and we work very closely with the city of Berkeley with public health there. So these are some terms that are important to understand as we talk about what the new quarantining and case response process will be based on the new guidance. So the definition for a close contact has not changed. That's someone who is within six feet of an infectious person for a cumulative period of 15 minutes over 24 hours. Isolation and quarantine are two results of either having symptoms or having been exposed to someone, and sometimes they get confused. So isolation happens when you are sick. Either you have tested positive for COVID, or you are what we call a presumed positive, which means that you have symptoms that are consistent with COVID. So isolation separates you from other people because you are contagious or likely to be contagious. Quarantine separates people who were exposed to a contagious disease. So in this case, it's someone who is a close contact to someone who was So in this case, it's someone who is a close contact to someone who was positive for COVID-19. And that close contact happened during their infectious period. And quarantine is where you're being separated to determine if you may become ill. And then finally, fully vaccinated is a new term and we use this term as we're looking at quarantine options. And that means you have either two weeks have passed from your second dose of a vaccine, if you had the two-dose vaccine, or one week has passed if you had the single J&amp;J vaccine. Next slide. So the next couple of slides, we will talk about the new quarantine protocols and how isolation works. And as a precursor to that, I just want to explain that this is very complicated. It's complicated for us and we are deep in the guidance and we are speaking to public health all the time about this. And I just want to assure both families and staff that if you become symptomatic, if you test positive for COVID or if you fall into one of these quarantine scenarios, the district will communicate with you directly. You will receive a letter. We often call you. You will be given exact information when you can return to school, when you might need to test. So what, what comes next is really an overview of that process. But if it involves you directly, you will get much more succinct and personal information. So a couple of things have changed relative to quarantine. The first is that if you have been exposed to a case of COVID-19, you are considered a close contact and you are vaccinated and asymptomatic, you do not have to quarantine. So this will be the case for many people and certainly for many students at the high school or middle school level who are fully vaccinated, again, two weeks have passed since that second dose and who are asymptomatic. During the 14-day period, when you're actually not required to quarantine, you are required to continue to monitor yourself for symptoms. And then if you have symptoms, you would actually move into isolation. What's also new this year is something called modified quarantine. And this happens when a student who is not vaccinated, so imagine this at the elementary school level. And when both the case, so that's the person with COVID and the close contact student were masked and supervised in a school setting, in any school setting, so outside or inside, during the close contact. So that's a lot of information right there. But again, it's unvaccinated and where both the case and the contact were masked and it was supervised in a school setting, then you qualify for a modified quarantine. And under this quarantine, you can attend school and you can also ride the bus. But there are a variety of criteria. So you have to remain asymptomatic during the entire period. Again, that's 14 days. You have to continue to mask at school. And you have to undergo twice-weekly testing during the quarantine period. And CDPH recommends that you get that first test as quickly as possible. So back when we were talking about testing, we said there's two types of testing. There's surveillance testing and then there's this modified quarantine testing. So what we imagine or envision rather is that in a scenario where a class or two classes is under a modified quarantine, they've met that criteria, that we would deploy testing during, during those two days a week to remain in the, in the modified quarantine students must test right to a school site. So that's something that we're developing right now. And then finally, the modified quarantine, it applies for your classes, but you, you actually still have to quarantine from sports or other extracurriculars before and after school activities and also activities outside of BUSD. There's also another type of quarantine that essentially shortens that quarantine period to potentially seven days. This is a scenario we actually don't really see happening or expect to happen at our school, but we're sharing it because it is part of the guidance. So this is when unvaccinated close contacts, where either the positive individual or the close contact was not masked when they came into contact in an indoor classroom setting. This is very specific guidance. They may actually discontinue their quarantine a little bit early. So they can do one of two things. They can have the full 10-day quarantine. Or if on day five, they take a COVID test and get a negative result, then they can return to school on day seven. And then finally, there is isolation. And again, this is when you are either positive for COVID or your symptoms suggest that you might have COVID, you're presumed positive. And under an isolation scenario, you can return to school or work under certain criteria as well. And that criteria involves both of these first two bullets. So at least 24 hours have to have passed since the resolution of your fever without the use of fever-reducing medications. And your other symptoms have to, have to have improved. They don't have to be gone, but they have to have improved. And then one of these number one or number two scenarios also has to occur. So the number one scenario would be your fever has resolved, your symptoms are improving, and either you've tested negative for COVID or your healthcare provider has documented that your symptoms are actually from some other underlying chronic condition. So it could be allergies, the reason why you have a runny nose or asthma. And then also, you can't be required to quarantine. And this is a little confusing, but what this essentially means is, let's say you were in a quarantine where you weren't allowed to come back to school. You've got a symptom, so you moved back to isolation. You then tested negative, but if testing out of your quarant, if, if you can't test out of your quarantine, you'd have to go back to your quarantine for a couple of days. So I know this is a little bit confusing. But again, if you, if you met this scenario, then we would provide a personalized letter that documented how this would work for you in particular. And then the other way to return again is to have those first two bullets, no fever, symptoms improving, and then 10 days would have passed since your symptoms first started. And then finally, I'd like to add relative to risk mitigation that many other strategies that we used in our schools last year will continue. We still will continue to ask families and staff to screen from home. It's different this year in that you're not filling out a, a fillable form or for staff, you're not using an app. But we provide questions relative to the symptoms of COVID and also if you have experienced a close contact over your student has, and we provide guidance for you based on that. And I just want to call into, or call your attention to the fact that congestion and runny nose has now been added to our symptom list. That wasn't on our student symptom list at the end of last year when we were screening, but that has been added based on the Delta variant and local conditions. Social distancing will still occur when possible. So it's not part of the guidance. It's not mandated, but we will continue to be thoughtful setting up desks and doing other student activities and always while eating and drinking, working to maximize distance between students. Ventilation systems are operable. Air purification systems are up in all of our classrooms and offices. Plexiglass barriers are in our offices. We continue to have signage reminding all of us how to be safe at school. Handwashing will be, continue to be stressed and there are supplies available. Cleaning and disinfection, and that includes when there is a case in a class and then to the extent possible, effort to limit the mixing of groups. So that might mean having one, one grade play together on a playground versus mixing grades, et cetera. And then finally, just to call your attention to other risk mitigation strategies relative to air quality. Most of you know, we are in the wildfire season. The fires have been significant this year. The Bay Area has had relatively good air quality all summer, but we are prepared for that to change and that really could change at any moment. And so we have guidance, the city of Berkeley Public Health provided this to us that provides a response at different air quality levels. And you'll see as the air quality worsens, there are more responses. So for instance, at the orange level, we're looking at sensitive individuals. Those could be people with asthma or other heart and lung illnesses remaining indoors. At the red level, we're moving more students indoors. We're restricting, restricting vigorous outside activities. And then all the way up to the purple, which is relatively rare, but we know can happen. All of us know that from living in the Bay Area, where there are no outdoor activities and we begin to have conversations about if we can close schools. And we have gotten some questions about, relative to COVID and AQI levels, about what happens if we close windows. And remember that we do have air purification systems running in all of our classrooms and offices. And those systems function efficiently when windows are closed or open.
Thank you, Ms. McDermott. Thank you so much for all that information. We're going to pause there for questions on that part of the presentation. And then I guess go to associate superintendent Aurelio for the, for the student supports issue. So are there any, does anybody have any questions about any of the information that Ms. McDermott just shared with us? I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, I can't see the hands. Go ahead.
You can go, Laura. It's fine.
We're going, all right, Dr. Vasidov, go ahead.
Hi, um, yes, thank you so much for that presentation. I, it was, it was a lot, but I really appreciated it. We also covered, you know, what to do in the case of air quality too. I think we're, as I said at the beginning, I know that a lot of work went into preparation for the summer and just, you know, wrapping for many districts, not just BUSD, but kind of wrapping our minds around all the nuances of modified quarantine is a lot. And so I want to thank the staff for doing that. It's not easy. It's complicated. It's complicated for, you know, people who work in public health too. So of course, it's going to be complicated for schools and then on the implementation side. But thank you so much for, for, you know, presenting this and I'm sure we'll get more information from our principals and on our website, et cetera. My question is about surveillance testing. And superintendent Stevens, can you clarify, when we're talking about surveillance testing, are we talking about rapid testing?
That's the, the current design. So for this school year, we're working with a new partner company. For a number of reasons, we want to make the consent process more easy and we're also interested in moving to the rapid antigen test. So our current design, as yet not finalized, but it will be by the August 23rd, is that we would be using a rapid antigen test. And if we get a positive hit from a particular individual, that we would switch over to a PCR test right there on the spot on campus.
Right. And that's, I think that's great because I think, you know, what I hear, what I've heard from public health professionals is that because the viral load is so high with the Delta variant, that it actually improves the accuracy of, of the antigen test. So I think it's great that you, that there's going to be that, that way of confirming the results from the antigen test with a PCR test. That's great to hear. My question is about the frequency of the test. I'm really glad that, that we as a district are committing to surveillance testing or, or, you know, going to be moving forward hopefully with surveillance testing, because a lot of districts just want to do symptomatic testing, right? And so I think surveillance testing, again, if we think of COVID-19 and all the different layers of protection, that's definitely a strong layer of protection because we're being proactive about finding, you know, potential COVID, not just because we see symptoms in someone. So my question is, I am concerned about the surveillance testing every two weeks. And what would it take to do it every weekly, right? I think with this variant and potentially new variants, I think when you read, I don't know how many of you have taken one of those little, those little tests, the at-home tests. But if you read the instructions, some of them, if, some of them say, you know, if you're going to do a rapid test, we recommend that you retest again every, you know, 24 to 36 hours afterwards. So is there a way that we can increase the frequency for surveillance testing to once a week?
There may be, and it's something we're actively considering right now. I think it's going to come down to sort of two questions. One is the availability of trained technicians from this partner company and then the availability of funding. CDPH, California Department of Public Health, has, has unfurled a new funding program for testing. It's relatively recent. It's only been in the last couple of weeks that we're learning about the details of the availability of funding. So we're now working through partner organizations to understand how much money is available and how much, how many staff members will be able to secure for testing. My own personal view on this is that we should concentrate testing at a more frequent rate in unvaccinated populations. So that might mean early childhood education and elementary. And then if we had to be forced to make a decision that we might stay with a two-week cycle for our vaccinated populations, older middle school and high school. So we'll learn more very quickly, but that is the goal to try and increase the frequency past the 10-day cycle.
Got it. I understand. Thank you so much, Superintendent. And I agree with you in the sense that it is really important that we offer more robust testing for our unvaccinated students. But I think, you know, with these variants, right, and breakthrough cases, I'm also concerned about our vaccinated student population. So I want to make sure that we keep surveillance testing for all. But if we, if we can increase the frequency for unvaccinated students, I think that would be great. Thank you.
So, so just to confirm, our, our baseline target is surveillance testing at all levels, early childhood all the way through high school.
Great. And then frequency, I strongly advocate for once a week. Thank you.
And I just want to remind, thank you, Dr. Vasidov. I just want to remind everybody, but the, the next item on our agenda is a discussion of the vaccines and the student testing. So we will, we'll be getting to that as well, even though Ms. McDermott did cover a, a number of aspects of it. Director Babett.
Just had a quick comment. I definitely appreciate your presentation and all of the details. And we'll be looking forward to the detail to help families really understand where they fit in the model. But was hoping we could get a user-friendly flowchart checklist or if-then kind of scenario brochure or pamphlet so that families kind of know what to expect, even if they're not in the letter phase. So that we could also be more clear and participatory in this process. Is that in the works? Is that something that's possible?
Yes, I, so that's a really good point because we understand how complicated it is. There is a flowchart provided by ACOE, Alameda County Office of Education, in the large reopening plan. But the flowchart itself is relatively complicated because the process is so complicated. So we are looking for a way to break it down into steps where families would only really have to read about the step that applies to them. So that is in the works.
Great. Director Sinek.
Thank you. I, I too want to echo the appreciation for all the work and the constant evolving nature of the pandemic and COVID-19 and the Delta variant. And I also want to thank our city partners and our county partners for, you know, collaborating. I have one kind of quick question. Actually, they're both potentially quick, but do we only communicate with the families with a letter or do we actually do a phone call and help answer questions if a family has it through the case investigation? Or do they, is there a way for them to talk to a human to get greater clarity if they're not understanding the, the complexity in the letter?
So it's a good question. The letters are available in English and Spanish. And we, we do talk to all cases because that's the very first step in contact tracing to understand where they were and with whom and when, and when they were on campus during their infectious period. I'm, it's actually our district nurse, who was one of our COVID liaisons, who was doing a lot of the family outreach. And Brent, I'm not sure if she's, I mean, I know in some instances, we are talking to families because in the very early days, I assisted in that process. And you're absolutely right. There were many, many questions when, especially early when we were just learning about COVID. I'd have to check to see if she's still calling all contacts. I'm not sure. I think that might be happening. But I don't, Brent, do you know, Dr. Stevens?
It's my understanding as well that there are calls in those instances where families have, need news quickly about a potential close contact. And so it's typically been the case that site administrators and secretaries in combination with our district staff are making those calls. We have had several larger quarantine events that happened last year. And so it takes longer to make those calls, but it's the intention to get news to every family so that they're aware of the, of the close contact.
Great. Okay. Yeah. So it'd be great. It'd be great if you could let us know when you find out what the, what the loop is there. And then the other question I have is, you know, there's some of our neighboring districts that have already started school and some that are starting around the same time. And I know that there's these weekly meetings. Is there opportunity where we are learning what's working and what's not working with our neighboring districts and what some of the practices? How much do we mirror what our neighboring districts are doing? Again, so that we can kind of get a sense on the differences or also any lessons learned, especially from any districts that have already opened?
It's a great question. In fact, each one of us is in our own Alameda County network, both for associate superintendents or chief academic officers, for public information officers, superintendents. We're frequently involved in meetings with our colleagues from other Alameda County districts. And Alameda County staff very often helps us understand the differences between our evolving positions. We haven't had many of those meetings at the beginning of the year, but it was sort of a feature of last year that we were convening frequently to sort of calibrate on all of these various decisions we had to make.
And Director Sinek, I, I have my first one of those this coming Friday with all chief academic officers for the county. So, and we're talking a lot about these same things in, in preparation.
Great, thanks. And I assume our labor partners are talking to their, you know, sister organizations. So I think any way that you can share with us, either That you can share with us, either through communication, you know, and writing or board meeting updates. Just, you know, any lessons learned or things that are happening in our in our sister districts would be really helpful.
We'd be happy to do that.
Student, student, where are your student director mustering this one?
Um, I'm not sure if this will be covered later, but I was just wondering what the protocols are around training teachers and administrators on what the. Like practices are for health and safety in terms of monitoring students during class time.
It's a great question. So I can speak a little bit about administrators and then a little bit about administrators' work with teachers. So we've had a number of meetings with all of our site administrators, all of our principals and assistant principals to walk them through the very same information. That Ms. McDermott shared this evening and in fact, give them even more detail. They've had an introduction to those things. They have had follow-up meetings. To be able to understand those nuances and then they have direct access to us if they have questions coming up. And then we're available to them on an ongoing basis. In addition, the city of Berkeley also offers a COVID liaison training. Not only for Berkeley Unified Administrators, but for all school administrators here in Berkeley. And our secretaries and our principals have been attending those for almost a year to be able to stay up to date on all of these changing protocols. And then as part of opening school, school administrators have been supporting their teachers to understand revisions to these protocols. So that's happening, in fact, tomorrow where we're welcoming all of our teachers back into professional development. Before they begin setting up their classrooms on Friday and welcoming students back on Monday.
All right, now let's continue on with the presentation.
Great. So we'll now move over to talk a little bit about work that's taken place over the summer to reinforce students. Sorry, supports for students and families for the 2122 school year. One thing that I mentioned in my opening comments, but that I'll share again, is that we have been working extensively with our administrators to help them understand the nature of trauma. And that trauma can be variable across families, students and staff members. And that the trauma of this last year is really defined as as something that has exceeded an individual's ability to cope or integrate emotions. It has to do with feeling overwhelmed or frightened. So these sort of definitions are very broad and we've been working with our teachers to support. Sorry, our principals to support teachers to recognize the symptoms of trauma in our community. We've also been working over the last several weeks to support our administrators to learn more about the process for understanding and recovering from trauma. Here is a representative slide from our management team meeting just a couple of weeks ago. As well, I'm sorry, and then Associate Superintendent Aurelio.
Well, I'm just very excited to see data on the screen. That's always exciting to see data on the screen. And this is honestly just a snapshot of some data from the spring. This represents our sixth through eighth graders, the star reading assessment that was given. We know that there we are data light as we go into this year, just the reality of the pandemic and where we were last school year. But this, as a reminder that we have a lot of work to do, that when students do arrive, we are going to spend some quality time. Really assessing where they're at, both on the academic front, but also on the social emotional scales. So just a precursor of things to come in the future as we start to gather more data and get moving through. This is also a reminder of our LCAP goals. We do have four major goals. Goal one being high-quality classroom instruction and curriculum. I mentioned to the board in closed session that I'm really excited to start. The discussions and start talking about teaching and learning again. So much of the previous year has been really operationally based. Spent so much of our time really managing a pandemic and we will continue to do that and safety is priority, but we are going back to. Really digging into our practices as teachers, our practices as a community and how we support our students. You can see that the other goals here go to around really targeted academic interventions. The previous slide, the data did show the discrepancies we see in and the inequities among different student groups. And of course, then, you know, making sure our schools are safe and welcoming and then continuing to work to improve our services for students. So this slide here is really speaks to the programs Berkeley Unified currently has and is expanding on. The far-left column really speaks to what we're prepared to do as students walk through the doors and we welcome them. We are bringing on a new early screener for reading. That is the Dibbles K2. Our teachers have been trained this summer or in the process of being trained. And they will be doing one-on-one assessments with our students because we want to identify early students who have reading difficulties. You can see that we're looking to expand our ethnic studies programs. We have a TSA for ethnic studies specifically that's come on board this summer. The middle column really speaks to the different supports that Berkeley already has in existence and that we would continue to expand. And finally, the last column, these are additional resources that we have added since the return to school. Especially after this pandemic. Couple to highlight there, I want to highlight that what's called the CCSA Division Schools. We are found disproportionately identifying African-American students for special education. Because of that, we have some targeted schools where we're we're going to be implementing a plan, providing really focused attention. To 160 students specifically that we've we've picked to to follow. In addition to that, we provided funding to our sites to create the distorted restart grants. Those were site plans that the schools developed. And there's a variety of plans, everything from increased emotional supports, counseling. The seven-period day of Longfellow, which is an attempt to provide additional resources to students. And you can see an example of a variety of different points there. And if I missed any, you really want to highlight, Dr. Stevens, I say, jump in.
No, and in fact, I think these, the four that are highlighted in pink will be detailed in the coming slides.
Exactly, exactly. So let's move to next slide. So we are looking at our affinity-based partnerships. A couple of those contracts were on the consent calendar this evening. Young Gifted and Black Program, that the STEM Steps After School Enrichment Program. We are going to continue to work and make strides on the African-American success framework. And a few others, I believe someone in public comment mentioned that the partnership we have, Kabe, around developing and bringing our EL master plan. To the to the present and future. It is due for an update. We also are going to expand on that and really work at bringing in parents. Parent learning and parent leadership and that work. And then I'm really excited about the the possibility that we're giving our leaders. And in the support we're giving our leaders, I do believe that coaching our leaders and providing resources is really key and we're partnering with. Your neighbor here, UC Berkeley and their PLI program. Some pending partnerships, edutainment for equity is would provide some additional outreach and work with families. We are looking to make our to expand our partnership with Puente, specifically Longfellow and Berkeley High School. I have actually a meeting scheduled the end of this week with Parent Institute for Quality Education. Looking at a partnership there, continuing to explore Latino literacy, Latinx literacy, and of course, college bond systems. This is just the highlight of the restorative restart grants. There was. Two available, $2 million that were apportioned through our COVID one-time funds for sites to expand services they offered. And so we, the the right side really shows the breakdown and how we distributed those funds and then some of the more common uses. We've added staff, of course, to increase in-person instruction. And as mentioned earlier, the social mental, social emotional mental health supports. Increased professional development. I know specifically, King Middle is bringing in Dr. Rogers Ard to work with that school on Raisin Equity. They're also working on grading for equity programming to two of the consultants I've actually worked with in my previous district, who I think very highly of. And that was great to see that they're also working with Berkeley Unified and just the continued academics efforts for students integrated people sports as well. So this slide specifically is highlighting the work we're doing around mental health and social emotional learning. Column on the right, those are just the continued supports. We do partner with various community resources at many of our elementary schools and some of our middle schools. We are going to expand those services to a few of the other schools. We are looking at ensuring that not only. We serve interestants who are Metapal eligible, but really expanding those services to all students that need those services. We are in the process and you will see an upcoming board meeting, the contract for Nairobi Institute. To bring dynamic mindfulness to our secondary, middle and high school groups as well. And then we obviously, we have a climate and culture TSA that's going to provide ongoing resources and staff training. So this is one of the highlighted features, the comprehensive coordinated early intervention support. That's the C6, short way of saying it. And these are the five vision schools. And as you can see, we're we're targeting specifically, specifically 160 of our scholars, African-American, black and Latinx scholars. We develop any classroom walkthrough tools so we can really examine the work that they're receiving. Will be partnering to have family workshops, specifically looking to develop a black African-American advisory committees at school sites. And then, of course, the implicit bias professional development to those vision schools, really supporting our levers at those schools so they can expand the offerings. For the staff and then continuing to work through a culturally responsive positive behavior matrix and that work has also begun. That is all. We are at the end, Dr. Stevens.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. We'll turn it back over to the Board of Education for questions.
Yeah, thank you so much, Superintendent Aurelio. It's a lot of exciting work. Let me ask my colleagues if anybody has any comments or questions on that aspect of the presentation. Before we turn to the vaccine question. Director Senna.
Thank you for the presentation and it is a phenomenal amount of work. So I have. Kind of a visual question where I'm trying to get a sense of like what the first couple of weeks will look like for our students. Who are coming onto campus and what professional development or training superintendent in relation to like. You talked about trauma-informed practice. I mean, you talked about the contract with the mindfulness. Nai 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 Nairoji.
Nairoga, I believe, yes.
Yeah, so I'm curious. Because there's so much going on that, you know, we can jump right into kind of our traditional mode of working. And just curious on what we're doing to, and I really feel like the support for our teachers is integral. Because if our teachers are coming back and our teachers and our staff and are coming back with feelings of anxiety. Or trauma in their own lives and their own experiences is hard for them to be supportive for the students. So I'm curious, just like what we're doing in kind of that embracing way to really support. Especially in the first few weeks of school, just that transition back into school. So that that was one question specifically. I have another one. Should I just throw it out?
Sure.
I didn't see anything about OFI and the support for students and families. And so if you could talk just a little bit about that.
Why don't I jump in on this one if that's okay? And I'll and I'll just work in reverse order. So OFI, if it was not included in that list, was simply a no mission. In fact, there's a lot of work happening with our Office of Family Engagement and Equity. That includes regular programming. It includes the expansion of the OFI team by four liaisons. Those positions are currently posted and we're recruiting folks for those new positions now. And it also includes the expansion of administrative capacity in the form of a director of OFI. That position just closed last Friday. And we're looking forward to beginning to select a candidate for the director of OFI position. In terms of sort of what schools will look like, of course, there's going to be lots of differences from classroom to classroom. But what we've been emphasizing through our principals is that this should be a return to first, to building friendships. To getting to know school campuses. For example, Berkeley High School is offering orientation sessions both for freshmen and for sophomores. To help kids know what the campus, you know, where where do I go? We're also seeing professional development show up at school sites just about assessment and how to take stock of students' needs. We're also seeing lots of resources going out from Gabe Fredman, our teacher on special assignment. Schools are taking great interest. In the resources that he's providing around sort of recovery from trauma. So what I anticipate the first weeks are going to look like is a sort of gentle start, teachers welcoming schools, or sorry, students back onto campus. Assessing needs and then beginning to build or sort of place students into programs that are appropriate for them.
And I will say, fortunately for us, we do have a professional development day in October and that day is really a great target. For many of these items to 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 continue to launch and to build off of. I know we are bringing some contractors in who are either new. Or continuing and that work will pick up. But yeah, I agree with Dr. Stevens. It really is about getting our students re-acclimated to school in that in that piece. And making sure our students feel safe and secure. And really, the relational side is going to be key and important. I also will say that for our middle school students, many of them have never been. And it's been more than a year, right? They have not had that experience. There's a lot to learn to go to middle schools. They're challenging years for our youth. So we we want to be jumped with them when they come in.
And have we thought about what kind of supports for teachers and staff and their own experiences? I know when we talked about allocating funding, we talked about also being able to provide supports beyond any, an employee assistance program. You know, for our staff. And I don't know whether we've had any collaborative discussions, not so much, you know, meet and confer kind of stuff, but really more just. Partnership discussions with our labor partners about how we can work together to make sure our staff and our teachers are. Are are supported. And so I'll just throw it out there. We don't need an answer for it right now, but I want to flag it that it's not. It's not an afterthought because it's such a driving force to, you know, the support for our students that we need to support our staff. And our administrators.
Thanks, Director Senna. Director Vasudev.
Oh yeah, that was a lot of information, but a lot of exciting things too. And thank you to Superintendent Stevens and to the staff. For really doing a lot of work over the summer to make sure that we have some excited targeted interventions for our students who we know are suffering the most. So I really appreciate all the hard work. My question is about, you know, when I look at the data on the, you know, we flash the data really quickly on the star assessments. And when I look at the reading data, it concerns me. And when I see our African-American students, our Latino students, our, you know, EL students. Having high percentages of students that need interventions or early or, you know, urgent interventions. And we still have a lot of really valuable contracts that I know are still in the exploration and, you know, pending phase, so to speak. So my my question is around Latino literacy in particular, because I saw those numbers and they were really high. When do you think we can get clarity on a timeline for the, you know, Latino literacy contract for the other things that are still pending? Because the school year starts really soon and we want to make sure that we have these targeted interventions in place early enough. So that then by the end of the year, we can measure if these new partnerships have been effective or not, right? So when do you think you can bring those contracts forward, Puente Latino Literacy, the other contracts that were in that slide?
So I will jump in and Dr. Stevens, by all means, jump in. You. You've been working more than five weeks. Now, what I'm going to say is my goal ultimately is to, if I couldn't get into this, this board meeting tonight, is to try to make it to the next board meeting. I am meeting many of these contractors for the first time, just in full transparency. And as I'm doing that quickly, that's the furious part, the fast and furious part, is meeting everyone and making sure that one, our goals are aligned. You know, we have our LCAP and that's key. The data is clear. We know where we need to work. That that data, like I said, I take the data with a grain of salt because we do need more data. And that's going to be really important as our students come into our system that we really truly assess where they're at. It's been also, in addition to the typical summer slide, we have a year's worth plus of pandemic impacts. We have to measure those. And so I want to be, I want to jump quickly, but I want to do it in a way that's really mindful. And and thinking through those impacts. I am a big believer and we have to evaluate what we do. You'll, you know, I I hope and you can hold me to this. I hope to never present anything without data. So. It's going to be really important as we get school up and running that we quickly assess where we're at and. And then work with these contractors, partners, to make sure they're the right ones. First and foremost, are they really going to target our students and what we need? And we do have a bit, I mean. And we do have a bit, I mean, I'm going to ask for a little grace. Give me a little grace and then we will definitely, definitely, that's going to be the focus. Like I said, getting getting back to teaching and learning. Yes, we have to have the safety and the pandemic piece front and center because we want that. That's priority one, getting everyone in and getting everyone safe. But then we quickly have to jump into this work.
This is awesome. No, thank you, Associate Superintendent Aurelio. Well, welcome to Berkeley. We're going to hold you to it. One, another question, I'm just gonna, is it okay if I just give you my quick questions right now? And then my, my other question is about like, things like CCs and also STEM steps. I know I heard yesterday at the presentation that those opportunities in that work would also be open to a lot of next learners. And I'm sure that means a lot of monolingual families too. And so do we have a plan to roll out information in Spanish to parents who may want to understand what STEM steps is and how, you know, their child will be served or what this our CC's work is, which can be, you know, very it can be kind of technical for parents to understand, right? And so like, do we have a way to authentically engage with our multilingual families, our Latinx families who may want to understand more how their children can benefit from these important programs?
So one of the the contracts Yola agreed to this evening was the work with Kabe. And one of the add-ons we did was to work with our Latinx families and really bring in that support. I'm also really excited about our new director of categorical and special projects. She has a vast experience. I know she will be helping and supporting a lot of these parent outreach groups and the parent advisory committees as well as the D LAC. And of course, I, I will be not at all of every single one of those, attempting to be at every single one of those meetings as well. Because it's really important. I am a believer that we need to get our communication out in multiple languages. I know we are limited by scope and just size of a district and everything else. I did come from a larger district where we had many more translators available. But it is something we have to make that effort. We have to make that effort to those families.
For sure. And I think, you know, we have our Ophi office, which is wonderful and our affinity groups that meet with us, who you'll get to meet with Associate Superintendent. But, you know, it doesn't, so with the Kabe, I'm excited about the Kabe contract. I think it's wonderful. It's a lot of PD work. But there's, you know, for Latinos, and I'm sure you understand, there's some that are English language learners. And then there are parents who are monolingual whose kids speak Spanish, right? Who's kids speak English and are not in that ELL pile. So I think it's really important across the board, both for EL and non EL Latinos that we have the mission for the parents available.
And Director Vasilev, that was my experience as a kid. My parents are monolingual, Spanish speaking. I had to do most of the translation for them and anytime we went to meetings or I definitely understand where you're coming from with that.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Director Vasilev. Just want to remind everybody, we've still got two pretty big items to go tonight. So Director Babett, I think you're next.
I just had a quick question. Wanted to know how we're going to make sure that the teacher leaders and principals and other administrators really have access to all of those funds that we've allocated to their school sites for those programs. And that they really know how to access them. Over the years, we've had, you know, people just, it's easier to deal with the PTA. Or it's easier to ask for a grant from Berkeley Public Schools funds than to really go through our process. So I'm really hoping that we can create some kind of informational system or like maybe one of our first Wednesdays or something where, you know, kids get out earlier so that the teachers and the administrators really do understand those grants that we've given to their school sites and can access those funds sooner rather than later so that we can actually use them to meet the students' needs sooner rather than later. So that's all. Thank you so much for everything else. And just so the community knows, we definitely saw more data. There were more data slides than that was presented tonight, and I definitely appreciated that. And I'm looking forward to all of the ways in which families can know exactly where their child is on the needs intervention or they're on watch or are they on borderline? So that we can really partner in this process and improve improvement. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Babett. All right. I don't see anybody else with a hand up. So I'm going to thank you, Associate Superintendent Aurelio and Dr. Stevens and Ms. McDermott for that presentation and move us along to the next item, which is vaccines, more on vaccines and testing. So Dr. Stevens, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great. Thank you very much. Take one second to set up my screen. So this next conversation, we had started to plan last week. This is a conversation about requiring that employees be vaccinated or test at some regular interval here in BUSD. You can note that these slides were updated from the slides that were originally posted for the public on Saturday. In fact, updated just around noon today to reflect recent news from the government, from Governor Newsom. That in fact, he would be enacting a mandate that all school workers be vaccinated by October 15th. So what I will do is just very, very briefly, provide a little bit of information for the board. And then staff is looking for direction to continue our work on mandatory employee vaccines or testing. In order to technically implement a policy of required vaccinations, we've identified this particular policy. It's on universal precautions. The technical amendment to the policy is highlighted here in blue. We've added in specific language associated with the COVID-19 virus. And at the bottom of this very brief section of policy have included employee vaccination. In red is further amendment to this language to reflect the language in the state's order that went that came out today. And that is to say at least weekly COVID testing. So this would be the sort of technical process by which the board would require this. We do know just on background that there is a strong legal authority for employers to require vaccination. This has only been bolstered today by the CDPH order for school workers. So we both listed the number of organizations that have already established authority of employers to mandate vaccines. That includes Cal OSHA, the Department of Labor and EEOC. And we can now include CDPH in the list of organizations requiring vaccinations. With respect to vaccination, so I guess a couple more details, so that the CDPH order, the one that came out today specifies that it should be enacted no later than October 15th. And then with respect to vaccinations, employers must permit that there's a health-related accommodation process, meaning an employee who can document a health issue and is therefore cannot be vaccinated must be exempted from the requirement. And then we know as well that there's also a requirement for religious exemption from vaccination. CDPH makes it very clear that these two exemptions do not apply to COVID testing. So and if employee were unable to be vaccinated, no employee who's unvaccinated is exempted from regular testing. We have had a chance just in the last day or two to pull together our team. This is the team that's both coordinating our testing program and to think about the vaccination requirement. We're presenting here what we imagine may be a timeline that is realistic here in Berkeley that would exceed the required timeline in the CDPH guidance. So we imagine sort of pending discussion and direction by the board this evening that we would be able to provide all of our employees notice of board direction and the state's direction to be vaccinated or submit to testing. By October 23rd, we're anticipating that we will have established our own onsite COVID testing program. That is an important element of enacting the state's directive. Employees have to have access to testing on campus. By August 27th, we're imagining having completed, fully completed the employee vaccination status verification. That's both constructing a vaccination database and confirming that database. This, I believe, having read the order just today, would also apply to all of our third-party partners, our contractors, any volunteers who are working. Essentially, any paid or unpaid worker in our schools would be subject to this particular requirement. We think then by September 3rd, that that would be a realistic date by which we would know that all of our employees are are vaccinated or participating in regular screening, COVID screening. And that's well in advance, about six weeks in advance of the required October 15th date. And I want to emphasize this is a probable timeline, whereas this is all still very new to us. But we believe that we can hit all of the milestones that we're articulating here this evening. And then to continue on to talk about student COVID testing. We've also been in discussion, members of staff, about whether or not we can mandate students to be COVID tested on our campus. We're concerned about this particular question because last year, in many of our campuses, we did not achieve better than the 30% participation rate in COVID testing. And we understand particularly with the Delta variant, that increasing that rate is a really pivotal part of our layered mitigation strategy. Last year, we ran into a number of technical hurdles, including a requirement that our families who wanted their children to be tested on campus submit a written consent for every single test that their child take. And they had to submit insurance paperwork. That was sort of last year's billing regime. Was that insurance companies were responsible for testing costs. These things have changed this year and we think that that's going to result in dramatic improvements. This year, we have a new testing partner. They're called Vestra Labs. We're just getting to know them. They have a much more streamlined consent form offered through an organization called Primary Health. The California Department of Public Health has now stepped in and offered funding for all score related testing, which I think is going to streamline the process very much. It eliminates the need for to collect families' insurance information. And now we do know that a blanket consent is possible. So not a test by test consent, but a blanket consent. Your one-time consent that applies to all future testing. So we've also been working to sort of figure out what other ways we might be able to maximize participation in testing. A number of things that we've been looking at include whether or not an opt-out process might be possible, whether or not we can mandate testing. And whether or not it is possible for a district to exclude a student from school if they are not testing regularly. We have at this point determined that there are significant barriers to mandated student COVID testing. Those include some legal issues and they're related specifically to the question of whether or not districts may exclude students for not participating in this particular version of testing. And then our test company, we've learned, will not test minors without parent consent. So we know for now that we have to rule out the question of mandated student tests, but are able to rule in mandated vaccination or testing for our employees. That's where we are. So now to turn it back over to the board, the question for deliberation is whether or not we should proceed to implement mandatory employee vaccinations or testing. And that should say employee testing, not student. I apologize for the typo there. And that would all be in advance of today's public health order, which establishes the October 15th deadline. I'm very happy to take questions if I can be helpful on this and look forward to the board's deliberations.
Thanks so much. Thanks so much, Dr. Stevens. And I know that this is a whole body of work that we hope not to have to do this year. And we, we, we need to do it. So I know I speak for everybody in the district and expressing appreciation for all the staff work that's gone into figuring this stuff out. And it's, and it's moved so quickly. And the funding, you know, is uncertain and changing. So it's a lot and I'm really grateful. The, just to try to make this discussion go as efficiently as possible, I think it's better, let's let's break it out into employees and students and talk about employees first. That's, and that, so the direction that I understand you're asking for from us is to, I mean, that is to mandate vaccines or testing essentially as quickly as possible. I mean, we already, we know now that the governor has already mandated, the state is going to mandate it for everybody effective in October. But again, as I said earlier, thanks to sort of our staff's aggressive work on this ahead of time, we're in a position to do it sooner than the state is mandating. And I guess what I would propose is that we provide direction to staff to carry out the plan that Dr. Stevens just outlined as quickly as possible, have it up and running as quickly as possible. That's what I would propose. And then I would just add to that, something that Director Vasilev mentioned earlier on in the meeting, which is to, and you alluded to this too, Dr. Stevens, to maximize the frequency with which we conduct the testing so that if there are unvaccinated members of of our employee community, and there aren't going to be very many. I mean, I think we're going to have, once we figure it out, I think we're going to have you know, in the high 90%, hopefully of people who are vaccinated. But for those few who are not vaccinated, if it's possible to have them tested twice a week, I think we should do that. I understand that there's some logistical and certainly financial hurdles to get over in terms of doing that. But I guess the direction that I'm proposing is that we move forward with this policy as aggressively as we can time-wise and aggressively as we can frequency wise with respect to testing. So that's, that's what I'm proposing. And then we'll talk about student testing after we get the board's direction on this point. So let me, Vice President Brown, let me turn it over to you first.
Thanks, President Alper. I'm glad you said the second to last thing you said, which is around the financial implications that come or that would be associated with increasing, increasing testing opportunities. Superintendent Stevens, do you all need more time to do a cost estimate of that? Especially not knowing what the exact funds are from the state that will be coming in. Is it a possibility to give you direction to move forward with the plan that you've already given to us? And once we know or have a better understanding of the COVID funds that will get from the state to then increase our, increase our, our testing opportunities? Or what is your recommendation?
I appreciate the question. Your thinking is exactly in line with mine. This is admittedly tonight's conversation is actually a few weeks in the making. We had not anticipated that today's news from Sacramento would sort of, you know, force all school districts to move in this direction anyways, but we had intended to do it. And so that's why there's this sort of bit of an awkward question being posed. So the question is about pace and frequency. With respect to frequency, we're not in a position right to, right now, to know exactly what reimbursements we'll receive for testing costs from the state of California. We have very early signals of what it might look like. But I would, I would not right now sort of offer a complete financial picture of a testing program without having more details. So what we're proposing is that we're looking for direction to move ahead. We'll give the board more information as we get more details about total costs. And I can keep you updated on the progress of this work.
Thank you.
Does the, does the statement that came out today talk about with specificity, how frequently you have to test employees who are not vaccinated?
I believe the specific language is at least once per week. As I read through the CDPH order earlier this afternoon.
Okay. So really just to, I'll get to my colleagues in a second, but because we have to do it anyway, the, the direction that we would be providing is to do it on a faster timeline than the state's requiring, which which it sounds like you're able to do and not necessarily the exact timeline you've presented, that's your proposed timeline. And that maybe, maybe with, with, well, at least once a week, you know, maybe with some slightly different language there. But really it's about the timeline, it sounds like.
It is, and it's helpful for us, it's helpful for us staff to know if it is really the intention of the board to try and increase frequency for unvaccinated staff. It is good to know that so that we can sort of use that as one of our planning goals.
Got it. Okay. Director Sinai.
Thank you. I think there's three elements that are important to think about. And I think one in particular is also the accountability and the verification of the vaccine. So there needs to be the system in place where every employee is informed that they are required to upload, provide whatever their data verification is, which could be the paper, you know, the silly little, you know, like paper thing. Or, you know, it could be the digital, you know, from the state of California. It takes a little bit to get that set up. Because I think we need to know who's vaccinated and who's not so that you could then implement the verification on as people are getting vaccinated. I think the other component, and I don't know exactly what the order of the governor, I know from the healthcare provider, we're under a similar order in September 30th is the deadline. You've got to remember that unless you're doing Johnson and Johnson, you know, it's two shots. And for those who are not vaccinated, so there's people right now who might only have one vaccination and they just need to get the second shot. If they haven't got the second shot yet, they would be mandated to be tested, you know, and they're going to be mandated to be tested the two weeks after until they're fully vaccinated. So I think it's important when we put out the timeline that we include all those steps. You know, so what we're doing in the healthcare field is everybody has to have their first shot by X date. And then everybody has to have their second shot by X date. And then everybody has to have their second shot by X date. And then have to have their two week grace period afterwards so that everybody's fully vaccinated by X date. And I think it's important for all of our staff to know those dates. Because to just say you have to be vaccinated, it's, there's a, there's a lot of wiggle room, you know, in there in the sense of forgetting that, you know, you've got these two weeks in, well, three or four weeks in between the first and second test. So I would recommend that if we're going to talk to staff and about that frequency that we put those dates in there. And what I don't know is with the governor's order, is the expectation is that everybody is fully vaccinated, meaning both shots, two weeks by October thirtieth. And if what you're asking us is, do we want to move that date up to, say, September thirtieth? You know, like, what's the date that we have? So I'm just trying to get clear on exactly what you're asking us in the sense of, do we want to accelerate the be fully vaccinated by date? And then if we're going to announce that on, say, next week, you know, do we say basically, you've got a week to get started and then we're mandatory testing? Or do we do mandatory testing starting next week if we've got the capacity? So I guess, you know, there's like three levels to it. So in the sense of my, my vote or my opinion or my, my thought is I'm supportive of accelerating the be fully vaccinated by. I think September thirtieth might be a good date because that gives people enough time, depending on when we notify them, to get the full array of two shots plus the vac, you know, the two weeks after. And then to also implement the weekly testing as soon as possible. And I'm comfortable that if there's the resources and the staff capacity to do twice weekly to increase it, but at a minimum, I would support weekly.
Can I just clarify something with Director Sinai, before you answer that question, Dr. Stevens? Because and I think this might be a difference with the, with the healthcare order, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director Sinai, but because this is a vaccine or test mandate, there isn't necessarily a date by which you have to get vaccinated. I think the idea would be as soon as we have testing up and running, if it's next week or a week from now, if you're not vaccinated, you have to start testing on whatever frequency we're requiring once, once or twice a week. And as long as you're not fully vaccinated, as you said, two weeks past the last shot, you have to keep getting tested at that frequency. There's no particular date by which you have to get vaccinated, because if you continue to not be vaccinated, you just have to continue.
Well, that, that's my question with what the, so the way the healthcare, this is my question with the governor's order today. Because I don't know exactly what the difference is, is, is he saying that by October thirtieth, all school employees and vendors and et cetera are to be vaccinated or they have to be tested?
I believe.
And, and that they have to, they have to provide a medical or religious, what I heard from the presentation is that they have to be vaccinated by October thirtieth, or they could provide the medical or the religious release. So did I misunderstand that?
Perhaps. So it is President Alper sort of, you know, rendering of the health order is also my understanding that we want to set up the system by which we've either confirmed vaccination status or know that those folks are testing. And I, as I read the, the health order, that's what I understand to be the goal, is that we either have folks who are fully, fully vaccinated or who are testing.
So the governor's orders just have a system in place by October thirtieth?
Well, it did, it only came out five hours ago, or I've read it five hours ago.
All right, let's look at it more.
I, like my colleague, I'm asking for a bit of grace on this one. So, so we're going to study it more. What we, I imagine being able to do though is by that September third date, that's the date that I, I think may be realistic that we will have confirmed our vaccination database and have directed the right employees, because they're not fully vaccinated, to begin that testing.
So let me ask a fourth question then.
Sure.
Do we have the authority, even though it, let's assume it's not in the health order and it's just have the system in place by October thirtieth? Do we have the authority to say we are going to mandate testing by X date unless you've got a medical or religious waiver?
We believe we do. And in fact, in preparation for this discussion, we were not aware of the CDPH order. But we were aware of authorities granted by, by Cal OSHA, by the Department of Labor and EEOC to employers to mandate vaccination. And in fact, we were going to base through our authority to mandate employee vaccines on those cases. And in fact, there's a single case now on mandated vaccines that have supported employers.
So I'll just shift my weighing in because I would actually support a mandatory vaccination by whether it's September thirtieth or October thirtieth. With the, with the testing, if we have the authority to actually mandate it with the medical and the religious waiver.
Yes, and I should specify the authority of employers right now is to mandate vaccines or mandate frequent, frequent testing. But, but that's sort of the or mandate frequent testing is a necessary allowance.
Okay. Director Vasilev, no, sorry, Student Director Muscarini Swann.
I just had two brief questions. I was wondering if there's any statistics available on the present employee vaccination rates? Because I know we saw that for students, but I don't think we saw any for employees.
We don't have that data currently. We're working very quickly to develop that database. And so that we have our own internal sense of the overall vaccination rate of our employees. And in the slides, I was imagining that we would have a constructed database for our employees by August twenty seventh. That's sort of what I think to be the target date for building this database and understanding our own vaccination rates of staff.
That seems like an important step in terms of pricing as well as just general information. And then the other question I had. Well, I'm not sure who would be most equipped to answer this, but I was wondering what the difference is between surveillance testing and then general mandatory testing? Would surveillance testing not be mandatory? What's the group range for that? Would that be for employees and students? I'm a little confused about the difference.
And there's good reason for confusion. So, so we're imagining that we will have surveillance testing going on in all of our schools. And that surveillance testing will be available to students whose families have consented and will equally be available to any staff member at that school site, whether or not they're vaccinated. And that's very similar to what we were doing in the spring. So that will cover a lot of testing for both vaccinated and unvaccinated students and staff. And then the testing that we're talking about in the context of this discussion is really for unvaccinated staff only. That they, that they would be required to test more frequently than every two weeks, at least once per week. This is going to mean that our employees are likely going to have to travel from their work site to a central testing location that we would build essentially our own testing kiosk. They would do that during their work day. They must, this must happen during paid time. They'd report there, they'd take their test, and then they could report back to their, to their work location. So there's a little bit of a difference in that we're offering both surveillance testing and we would have an employee testing kiosk for our unvaccinated employee, our employees.
Thank you.
Director Vasilev.
Yeah, I understand that there are still details to figure out, but my general guidance is to move forward with the accelerated mandate on the Berkeley side. I, the date, I think, Dr. Stevens, that you announced was September third, right? When we could, the earliest that we would have our testing set up.
Right now, I think that's a realistic target date. Now, now there's an awful lot of details between now and then. Unknown to us, but, but we think if we can build this, this database, begin to communicate to our employees and have our testing operational by August twenty third, that we can then begin to require testing of unvaccinated employees by that date.
Right. So that would be my guidance. If we could accelerate to that date, that'd be great. And also increase testing to twice per week. And if not, minimum once per week.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Director Babbitt.
Yes, I share staff's recommendation, support for staff recommendation. And just want to make sure that when you do your costing analysis of increased testing, that it does include those labor and travel time cost for staff to do it twice a week and also just the, the, the added value or support that twice a week brings versus just the at least once a week and the inconvenience to some staff it may create also doing it twice a week. So just want to make sure that if we increase it, that we're very solid on our reasons why we're increasing it and that we've costed it out, including those, the cost of labor and travel.
Thanks, Director Babbitt. Director, Vice President Brown.
Um, thank you. The last thing, Director Babbitt just sparked a thought in my mind. In terms
You muted yourselves, Vice President Brown.
Wow, never done that before. In regards to the time, Director Babbitt made me think about the time of testing. And have we thought about, like the student director said, thought about who has been tested so we, or who has been vaccinated? So we know how much time it will take to do onsite testing once or twice a week? And have we thought about the impact that it may have on our staff? With getting, trying to get to campus a little bit earlier to test, just what, what thought has been put into that?
Well, this is all still very new to us. So we don't yet have the data that we need to understand sort of what percentage of our staff is vaccinated. We think it's very high, but we probably need several more weeks until August twenty seventh to be able to confirm that data. That's both building a database and then checking with employees to verify. And then what we haven't done is sort of begin to calculate sort of these, you know, what Director Babbitt is rightly sort of calculating as these additional costs, hidden costs of this program. We do know by law that we're required to offer this during the work day. And that means that people will leave their work assignments, we leave their work locations and take the time required to travel and go through this testing protocol. So those are, you know, those are real costs and they're ones that we have yet to sort of really consider because this is also new. But I really appreciate the, the sort of guidance that we should be thinking about the impact on employees as well and weighing that against the added benefit to, to the community's health.
Thank you. With a specific focus on, on scheduling in an effort to, to make sure we're not interrupting already planned schedules for our employees.
That, that's correct. This would all have to be, you know, employees leaving their assignments. And that means that some work is necessarily left undone as a result of not being able to be on their work location.
That's correct. Thank you.
Student Director Muscarini Swann.
And what was the reasoning behind having the testing location off of campus?
Well, we imagine if, if we have surveillance testing taking place on all of our campuses once per two week cycle, that wouldn't be frequent enough for employees to take their test at their own work location. But let's say we've got somebody at Ruth Actie School. If the test team only shows up at Ruth Actie once every ten days, that's not frequent enough. And in that scenario, the employee would have to travel at least every other week to some central location. If we're able to increase surveillance testing to once per week on every campus, then it becomes much more convenient for unvaccinated staff just to take their test while the surveillance team is there on their campus. So a little bit of the sort of operation of this detail depends on how frequently we're able to offer testing across the, across the entire district.
Okay. That seems like it might end up being worth it in terms of costs for transportation and time for staff. I don't know.
Okay. So I think on the, on the employee testing, you're hearing go forward with this plan and have it in place as soon as possible, which would be sooner than the state is requiring. And to consider the requiring greater than once a week testing, once you've done an analysis of the costs and and determine whether that's feasible or not, given all the costs, but that there's there's good reason to test is off, there's good health and safety reasons to test as often as possible if we can do it. Is that fair?
That feels really accurate as I'm listening to the conversation as well.
Okay. I strive for really accurate. Okay. The next topic is student testing, and I'm not sure that you need a whole lot of direction from us. My understanding with the student testing is what, what are you asking for with respect to student testing?
Yeah, this really turned into more of an informational item as we're preparing for tonight's discussion. We were looking at the question that many people were beginning to ask, can we require students to be tested when they're on campus in person? And what we learned in doing our research, both for legal reasons and technical reasons, that we're simply not in a position to require students to be tested. That was because our testing partner will not test minors without parental consent. And that there are also what are called free and appropriate public education issues if a student was denied access to the campus because of the test. So we're really ruling that out as an option available to us. And tonight's presentation was really to present that information to the board after staff conducted that analysis.
Okay, great. And just if you could just say a word, Dr. Stevens, about why we can't require that students be vaccinated. You just explained why we can't require that they be tested. Can you, can you talk to that for a minute?
Well, there's, there's a couple of things going on right now. Typically, it is the state that defines sort of mandatory vaccines to be able to attend public, public schools. We also are in a situation right now where vaccines both are not authorized on an emergency basis for some portions of our student population and for ages twelve through eighteen, that continues to be an emergency authorization. Our feeling is that we should be letting the state take the lead on defining mandatory vaccines for students across the state as opposed to sort of jumping out in front of public health organizations that have that expertise.
Well, and but wouldn't the legal issue be the same in terms of denying a, a public education to a student who isn't vaccinated in the same way that we can't deny an education to students?
We think it is as well. You know, until the state sort of issues this mandate, we think that it is equally risky in the same way that I described it for testing.
Okay. But the good news is that it seems like from the city's data that in our community, the kids are really getting vaccinated at very high rates, which is really encouraging. Okay. Director Babbitt had a question, I think. Yes? Yeah.
Yes, I just wanted to show a great appreciation for finding a new partnership. Because as a parent, it is very efficient for me to have to sign one form, then a continuous form each time. So thanks for overcoming that hurdle and definitely grateful that we don't have to worry about insurance costs and all of those other concerns that parents may have in making those decisions week after week around COVID testing. So just wanted to echo my appreciation for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Babbitt. All right. Now let's move on to our action item, our last item. I know in the beginning of the meeting, I said, we're going to be talking about all this, all these non-COVID related issues, but we have another big COVID related issue, but it's critical to our families whose, whose kids won't be able to come on to campus, right? So
President Albert, can I make a quick comment on the test, on the student testing part?
Sure.
I raised my hand last, I didn't realize.
I'm sorry, I missed you.
That's okay. I think you were looking down. I raised my hand. It was like, but really quickly, just superintendent, has there been thought into how we're going to roll out consent so that we can increase the amount of consents that we get for student testing? Because I think that that's, that's what would really make this whole process successful, right? If we can increase the frequency of student testing and also the amount of consents that are signed, like, has there been any thought on the communication process for that? And will, can we expect more information in the upcoming weeks? So I realize this is all new and evolving.
Yes, there has been thought and, and more is needed still. We are very new to these, these companies. Vestra is the testing provider. Primary Health is the company that is organized the sort of consent database. That's also the way families would get their results back. As we've been looking at the primary health consent form, it's all online. It's a very simple to use electronic portal. It's a one time only consent. There is no requirement to upload insurance information. So what we're imagining is sending this out through as many different mechanisms as possible. That will include our district email, we'll do social media. We'll continue to send it out in our family newsletters. But as well, we're going to count on our schools to make sure that this information is getting out through their newsletters, PTA newsletters, and ask our teachers, in fact, to send out these consent forms as well. One of our asks, sorry, there's one more thing. One of our asks very specifically is that we increase the availability of reports on participation. It was one of the disadvantages last year that we were getting only infrequent reports about the number of families signing up. And so we've asked for weekly reports that we'll share with schools so that we can continue to celebrate increasing rates of participation.
That sounds great. Yes, I know that some schools throughout the state, what they've been doing is they've had people stand out like outside. It could be members of the PTA also to support with consent. And there's a way, I think it's more onerous to do paper consent. And there's a way, I think it's more onerous to do paper consent and then input that data into primary. Um, that, and I understand the challenges of that, but I think for a lot of our families, especially, it might struggle, struggle with technology. Um, I like the thought that has been put into multiple opportunities for consent and really just pushing that out so that this program that we're, you know, investing resources in and that the state is helping us launch can be as successful as possible and we can keep our students and schools as safe as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks Director Rassidah. All right, now let's move to item four thirteen point one. Dr. Stevens, and I don't know if this is your Associate Superintendent Aurelio.
Actually, I'll be uh t- turning over the microphone to Associate Superintendent Aurelio.
Good evening, everyone. At nine thirty-three, we're gonna attempt to do this in ten to twelve minutes. So we're, we're gonna try to get us through.
We're gonna, we're gonna hold you to that, too.
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna set the clock. So we are here this evening. We've held two town halls last week, at one in English, one in Spanish. Uh, I recognize some of the names in the attendees, and so they might have seen and heard some of this presentation already. Um, but we're here this evening to update the board on uh this action item around independent study. We, you also have attached the board policy that needs revisions to be brought updated, to be updated to mirror the changes in AB one thirty um that were brought forward for this coming school year. And with me presenting this evening is Heidi Weber, the Principal of Berkeley Independence School. So independent study um is a program that already existed in Berkeley Unified. Um, independent study is being expanded now to be available to all students in grades TK to twelve. Um, it is an alternative to classroom instruction, uh sort of different modalities that are used, but it is not an alternative curriculum. Um, the, the AB one thirty law wants to show that it's substantially similar content and delivery, same standards, um that our students would receive in independent study. One thing to note that is independent study is a choice, it is a voluntary enrollment. Our families would choose that this is their option they want for their student. Now, this is a chart that shows the first two columns are existing Berkeley Independent Study programs prior to the changes in AB one thirty. Um, there's been some minor adjustments to these two existing programs to be in compliance with the the law changes. Um, we have assisted homeschool, which is a K eight program. In this model, the parent is the true, truly the main teacher. They're providing essentially twenty-five hours of support and instruction to their child. Um, that the school-based teacher provides a ninety-minute session per week where they're really coaching both parent and child, providing uh support, assessments, evaluation of progress towards standards. But really, this existing model has been in in place for Berkeley Unified for a while. The high school program, which is nine twelve, is a subset of Berkeley High School. Our schedule provides three quarters per, or three classes per quarter. Um, essentially, students complete a year's worth of content in in a semester and then take another set of classes the following semester. Um, and students are able to sort of co-take classes at Berkeley High School campus for the, some of the courses that are not necessarily offered to be independent, things like po- potentially music instruction, um, some of the more enrichment courses that make sense to continue to attend Berkeley High. One thing to note is we do have A through G offerings for students. They do get a comparable education um that leads towards graduation and diploma and college readiness through this program. So those are two, the two existing programs. The new program that we're adding in response to obviously a return from a pandemic is the new virtual academy. We're going to be offering for kinder through fifth grade, um, the ability to essentially get instruction via remote. Um, and that's going to be a combination of asynchronous and synchronous instruction. There are requirements specifically that are spelled out in the board policy around how much synchronous um daily synchronous, not, I'm not going to say time, but there's a, an element of secret uh synchronous or live instruction as well, and live interaction for students spelled out per grade level. And that's available. So we have, we've brought on board and hired uh three teachers from within our, our teaching ranks here in Berkeley. Uh, they want to do this instruction. They're excited about this instruction. They've had an opportunity to plan with the principal this summer in, in, to be ready um come Monday when we open our doors, virtual doors for, for the academy. Um, and so that is programmed. It is combination classes at this point, K one, two, three, and four, five. So this is just a little bit of data. See, here's some data for you all. A little bit of data of the interests we're seeing in independent study. Um, so last spring, we are, we were in a distance learning model when, when we reopened schools and we had about seven hundred fifty uh families surveyed. This only represents two hundred fifty of those families, but you can see there was still interest in a virtual academy or so, not necessarily coming back in person in the fall. And down below, we, we did have over eighty participants in our English Town Hall. And I would say roughly another twelve to fifteen participants in the Spanish language Town Hall. And the numbers represent some of the families who attended the orientations we had last week. I will say, and maybe Heidi can speak to this, I think she had an orientation today that included about a hundred participants. This is just sort of a synopsis of what the virtual academy might look like. It, it closely resembles a bit of distance learning, but is not exactly what families would have received in the spring. There's definitely much more streamlined uh schedules and nine to two forty-five schedule, four days a week with a shortened day on Wednesdays, so teachers can do uh collaboration, they could monitor student progress, they can have time for IEPs if needed, cut family contacts, professional development, all that good stuff. I'm gonna turn it over to Heidi, so you can give us a little walkthrough of a, this is, I would say, a draft schedule, sort of tentative schedule, what the K five academy looks like.
Um, hi, thanks for having me tonight. Um, so just some of the highlights that, you know, were, were outlined on the last slide um are that uh the teachers who helped us plan over the summer really wanted to make sure that there would be thirty-minute breaks away from Zoom. Um, so uh every time you see a yellow um line across the, the page, there's thirty-minute breaks throughout the day. Um, and that's for teachers to be able to do some more prep and for students to get away from the computer. And then the other key uh important part um in the morning is the, the math instruction. We wanted to make sure there was grade-level math instruction. And so that is by um with the teacher for a half an hour and then um uh with uh doing some asynchronous work for a half an hour in the morning. Um, and then in the afternoon, um, and the very first thing in the morning, there, there's an opportunity for some whole group meeting. Um, and then in the very end of the day, there's small group instruction time by level, so for reading and writing, um especially. So one of the things that's new about AB one thirty is that there's some requirements around what happens by grade level. So TK through three has a new requirement for daily synchronous instruction for all students. So in our assisted homeschool program, we're looking at our, our K um through three teacher being able to offer actually some um Zoom um classes for thirty minutes a day, and that, that's new. Usually, it was only meet, meeting once a week for the ninety minutes with the, the parent who's the main teacher. Um, and then for four through eight, um, there's a requirement for something called daily live interaction. Um, and, and the weekly synchronous instruction, which happens in the, the ninety-minute class um with the teacher in assisted homeschool. So those are two new things. Um, there, it isn't new that nine through twelve has weekly instruction. We do that already and we'll keep, keep doing that. So that it's a part of the new ed code, but it's not new to us. And then um, we already mentioned that what we're offering needs to be uh very similar to what's offered um in the regular school, in-person schools.
So one of the requirements uh that AB one thirty brought in is this tiered re-engagement, uh which is a really vital and important piece. Um, there needs to be a written agreement bit with the families around the, the work that they're going to be doing in independent study. But then we need to monitor the progress of these students very closely. Um, the requirement is that if a student is not participating and do, making progress, essentially sixty percent of a week. So if you can imagine, if it was attendance-based, it's three out of, three out of the five days they would not have been attending or participating in the work that we, that would trigger some re-engagement strategies. And everything from contacting the family, potentially having a conference with the family, additional outreach supports, and even reevaluating if independent study is the appropriate place for those students. One thing I really want to point out, and this is part of the AB one thirty, and it's a really challenging part of the AB one thirty is that um students who have IEPs, prior to committing to an independent study program, we must hold an IEP meeting um to have a team decision regarding placement. Can we support the requirements of the IEP in this model? Do we need to make adjustments, accommodations, shifts to make sure that the independent study program is appropriate for the student? So that is something that, that's specifically named in the ed code um that we must do. And I know it's going to pose some potential challenges for us as we move forward. And then, of course, for our edu-, for our English learners, we have to continue to provide ELD services for those students, and we will do so in this model. I will add, for our students who are in dual language in a TWI program, this, this independent study is a model they can attend. However, it's not going to be a, a replacement for TWI, not going to receive the TWI instruction in this model. We are going to look at the numbers we get. If we do get a significant number of TWI students who want independent study, we're going to look at ways to try to build some enrichment, some Spanish language enrichment. Um, it would most likely be sort of an after-school model, but providing so that students do still continue to get some of that language support. So I bring you this evening this written board policy uh that is attached. Essentially, the policy needed to include some adjustments and changes in language, specifically the eleven items that are listed down below. Lastly, I would like to share that this program is open and available throughout the whole school year. Uh, families can choose at any moment to enter and enroll in this, in this independent study. And upon choosing to re-enroll or be, come back to in-person instruction, we do have a five-day time period to get students back in the, in school, in person. Um, one thing to note, and I want to be really clear, and this is, this is a, a tense point, which is we can't necessarily guarantee that a student will be able to return to their home school or home classroom where they, where they departed. We will do everything possible to get them back, but we know that our Berkeley schools are in high demand and high need. And we do have low-leading moments throughout the year and week lists. And so we are really being mindful of that. We can't guarantee a return to their home school. Um, but we would do every effort to try to do that. Lastly, um, a slide around the orientations that have been sort of ongoing. Uh, I know I mentioned that uh Principal Weber that had one earlier today with a really high um attendance. You must do an orientation or a meeting prior to enrollment. We want to make sure we're providing our families all the information they need about independent study, so they know what they're getting into um before they sign up and, and making sure that our students are supported when they do join us. And there's an email that you can use as well if you want more information. And that is our presentation. I was close, President Albert, I was close.
You were, you were, and it's your first meeting, so we'll give you like a few minutes leeway. Um, all right, thank you so much for all of this. I mean, yet another huge body of work um that we needed to do, that you all needed to do on, on little notice and with change in guidelines. So thank you so much. Um, let me, we, this is, this is for action. We need to approve um the, the changes to the policy. Which I'm just looking up something real quick, but in the meantime, are there questions um for Associate Superintendent Aurelio about the, or Miss Weber, sorry, uh Principal Weber um about this. Um, Director Rassidah.
Just, um, I appreciate again all the hard work that went into this um and being thoughtful about all the different programs of our district. And my question is about the two-way immersion model, right? I know that you're, you said you want to see what kind of numbers you get before there's like a, any additional TWI enrichment for the program. When do you think timeline-wise that you'll make that determination? And what numbers do you have now? What numbers are you looking for to be able to, to make that determination?
So I, I'm trying to be proactive about that. Um, I have met with Principal Sivamendez. I've encouraged her to sort of poll her teachers to see if there are teachers who'd be willing to, to potentially pick up a point two sort of FTE that we would add, um, that could provide some of that instruction. So we are looking and exploring those options. Principal Weber might have a better sense of if we have too many to be, how many TWI students we have either who have come to orientation. I know where those numbers are really fluctuating, and, and just because they attend orientation doesn't mean they've committed to going to the program yet. Um, but we are going to watch those numbers closely, um, and just like I said, in anticipation that this is a need. We want to make sure we are, we're able to provide it.
And similarly, thank you so much, um Associate Superintendent, sorry, Julia, uh Director Sinai, I have one more question, which is, um, for students with disabilities, do you have an idea of how many students with IEPs are interested in the program right now? And I, and I understand the, the need to really be thoughtful and look at their IEPs to see if it is even the, an, a possibility. But do you have any sense of the numbers?
Um, I do have a sort of a rough estimate on the families who have been emailing our special ed department as far as interest in this program. Um, I want to say it's roughly six-plus high schoolers and another six or so middle to elementary age students um who have IEPs. Every student's very unique and individualized, and we know that, and the, the needs and services that would be required um can be extremely challenging to provide in this environment um in through independent studies. So we really are going to have to look at them case by case and how we provide support. We are looking to be proactive in that as well, and we are looking at trying to bring on some special education staff for independent study um in anticipation that we are going to get an increase in that need. But like I said, even hiring one special ed teacher might not be enough, um, because the, the needs are quite unique. Um, you know, the difference between a mod severe student versus a moderate student um that can really dictate the need for the services that they're required.
Thank you.
Director Sinai.
Uh, yeah, I just echo and applaud Principal Weber and, and Associate Superintendent Aurelio for all the work you guys have been doing and with the community town halls. Um, I, I, one quick question, are there any enrollments yet?
Uh, I'm gonna turn that to Principal Weber. There are. I, she shared a spreadsheet with me, but I don't have it open in front of me. Principal Weber, do you know what your enrollment looks like as of right now? And I do want to say we have an existing independent study, so there's existing enrollment we're adding to.
So maybe what the, what the delta is.
Right, right.
Don't say delta.
Oh, yes, not delta.
But the difference, but the difference is.
Growth, growth. We use growth.
Um, yeah, so I, there's about twenty-seven families that have already um turned in their, done the contracts for the K eight assisted homeschool and about ten who have started, you know, um have turned in their contracts for the, the K five virtual academy. So we had, you know, many more come through orientation and um, I'm grateful, uh, Tom Reinhardt has joined our team, so he's helping with that enrollment process and reaching out to families and, and getting the contracts, um, the agreements signed, and, and then we get to move forward in the enrollment process. So thank you for, for providing uh more support. We, and we're appreciative of it.
Yeah, so then that, that was kind of, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna add to, just so, so we're aware, is that we, our class sizes mirror our sort of average class sizes for those grade spans. So K three, K five, you're gonna see a twenty-three to one sort of ratio. That's our goal. And I don't know, that's a fire alarm beeping. Sorry for that.
Uh, do you need to go? Um, so my next question has to do with planning um on both the classroom side and the independent study and or virtual academy side. I understand, um, I understand the compelling desire of families to be able to return to their own classroom or their own school and, and, you know, and um at the same time, my understanding is that enrollment is like rolling on this. You can come in and out. Um, kind of, y- you don't need, so help me understand, do you have to have a medical or reason you, you just can make the decision? So I guess my question is, with that kind of potential flux, it could be extremely challenging for the classroom teacher in the traditional school to have people kind of coming in and out. Um, and then there might be space to come back or not come back. And then within the capacity of our teaching pool on the independent study virtual academy, I could anticipate just from seeing some chatter, people kind of saying, well, I want to start onsite, but then I might change my mind and just how we, how we anticipate and plan for that.
I will add, it's almost like we need a visual like that, the quarantines too, because I think it's almost as complex on some levels, because there's another layer, uh Director Sinai, which is in the change in the laws, once any of our students hit fifteen. change in the laws, once any of our students hit fifteen days of independent study, because we still have short-term independent study that exists, that process of getting, collecting work in advance and doing, say, five, ten, ten days, fifteen. Once a student triggers fifteen days, by day sixteen, they technically go into this system. So that's another, and that's cumulative days, not just continuous days during the year. So it gets very complex.
When you say this system, you mean the independent study?
Independent study. It does. So we have a lot of tracking to do. We have tracking to do individualized sort of student attendance across our district, especially as we look at modified quarantines and quarantines, because how we count those days can be counted towards independent study. And so there's a variety of factors that play into it. We do have rolling admissions for independence at any given moment, a family can say, I am not feeling safe. We have and, and they don't have to provide a medical documentation for this. This is, it's, there is a low threshold. We're, we're trusting our families. Of course, they still have to have the meeting in advance to make sure it's the right thing. They still have to sign a written agreement, and they enter independent study, at least within the first thirty days of independent study. They have to have a signed agreement. But then the only timeline is the return. When they choose to exit, we have five days to get them back in. It is complex.
Yeah, it's very complex. Okay, Director Babett. And then we should take action.
Thank you. I just wanted to know the difference between instructional minutes for the independent study program and in-person learning.
So I'm going to actually turn this to Principal Weber. She has a strong grasp on sort of the instructional minutes there. I don't think there's going to change the independence day instructional minutes, so she can speak to that. I know that, but the way they do instructional minutes now.
Yeah, so that we haven't had a change to instructional minutes. In fact, we're going, you know, we're going back to our regular number of minutes for the high school and the middle school and the K, K five for assisted homeschool. So, and then the new AB one thirty law, there's no minimal minutes that you have to offer, which is different from, you know, last year with distance learning. So it really depends on which of those programs you're going to be joining. You know, if you're at the high school level, the minimum amount of time students are in class might be three hours a week if they're having their three classes. Some classes meet more than once a week. And, you know, at the high school, students can come in person as they usually have, or they could have a virtual section if they're going to be all virtual. And then at the middle or the K eight assisted homeschool, it, it's that ninety minutes a week with the independent study teacher coach. And then for K through three, it's thirty minutes a day as well over Zoom. And so it just really depends on the program and then.
Principal Weber, can you speak to? I know that time is measured by seat time, but it's really measured by sort of completion of work in specific ways.
Yeah, and the way that they talk about it in the law, and then we've talked about it before in the independent study, is, is it's about participation. So if you're completing work, if you're turning in work, you know, daily on Google Classroom or CSO, the students, teachers are able to take positive attendance, and that's the way that we, you know, show participation. So.
Director Sinai, one last.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just have a quick question that's referring back to public comment tonight. The comment that was made by the teacher who teaches at Children's and at Herick. And I'm not clear on the problem that he was identifying, though it sounds like one, that if somebody is being released from, from the hospital, how are they going to get continued? And so I don't know if there's a bridge there with independent study or if there's some other intervention. So maybe this is Associate Superintendent Aurelio. If I could just ask you to look into that, because I definitely don't want our children who are being released from the hospital to be in any kind of compromised situation. So just to flag it.
I will, and I believe Principal Weber is very aware, because we were texting about that comment earlier. So she's aware of that, both the instructor who is speaking and that situation specifically, because there is a partnership with SEDAR and the Herick Home Hospital and how those services are provided. There's some uniqueness to that. And that's the impact that's having on the instructor, because they are going back to in-person home, home hospital instruction, not a virtual home hospital instruction.
Okay, thank you. So we need to take action on this. We actually need to approve this policy before school starts. So the first thing we need to do is vote to waive the second reading. Normally, a policy change would go to the policy committee. But because we didn't have time to do that, we need to vote to waive the second reading of the policy change, and then we need to take a second vote to actually approve the policy. So I'm going to move to waive the second reading of this policy. Is there a second? Second by Vice President Brown, Ms. Chiroz, can you call the rule, please?
First, Student Director Mascherano Swan?
Yes.
Director Rassidev?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Yes, and before we take the second vote, I just want to say that the next and last thing that we will do is have extended public comment. So now is the time to raise your hand if you'd like to give extended public comment. Once we start, there won't be an opportunity to raise your hand. So if you want to speak, raise your hands now. And now I'll move to approve the amended policy about independent study. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Vice President Brown, Ms. Chiroz.
Director Mascherano Swan?
Yes.
Director Rassidev?
Yes.
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 Director Sinai?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Are you going to let me vote?
President Alper?
Yes, thank you.
Got it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chiroz. Thank you all. Thank you, Principal Weber and Associate Superintendent Aurelio. All right, now is time for public comment. We have two public commenters. They have stuck around this late, so we can give them three minutes each, Vice President Brown. We have two people, Matheson Ott and Cora Stryker. We'll start with Matheson Ott.
Okay, unmuted, thank you. I'm just loading. Hi, I'm a parent. My kid's at Ruth Acti, and I just, I'm concerned. I don't want to say that you guys are downplaying it, but my concern is that bears and after-school programs are, we're, we're, we got word tonight that they're having trouble hiring. And as a parent that relies on after-school care, I just want to make sure that you guys are focusing on making sure that after-school programs as well as bears are staffed fully, so parents can rely on this for their kids. The concern was we might not know for another week and a half after school started whether our kids are going to be able to have after-school care. So please, please make sure you're focusing on that. So parents that rely on this so they can go to work have this service available. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Thanks for raising that and for, for staying so late. Cora Stryker, you have our last comment of the night.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hello, hi. I'm a parent of an incoming kindergartner, and I guess my question is about the mixing of classrooms. And I guess it's a concern that, you know, a lot of the data we have about what prevents school transmission comes from the alpha variant, and cohorting was a big part of that. So our pediatrician actually yesterday recommended we do, we do virtual learning simply on the basis of the non-cohorting status for, for BUSD. So, you know, I know I'm not the only parent concerned about that, and you know, I, I just wanted to state that I know that we're limited by space and that, that we're trying to get everyone on campus, but if there's any way to minimize mixing. For instance, the, you know, I understand that if a substitute teacher cannot be found, there's going to be like a mixing of classrooms. That to me seems like a potentially unnecessary measure that, that opens up to more exposure than, than it outweighs the benefit of staying in school for that one or two-day period.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Stryker, for, for that comment and for staying so late. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for all your due diligence. I know you guys are thinking really hard about this.
Thanks. We appreciate it. All right, well, that concludes our agenda. So I will adjourn the meeting and thank everybody for their participation and have a good night.
Thank you, President Alper.
Good night.